Okay, great. Well, we'll do roll call then. Eliana, please.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Trustee Marquez.
Here.
Vice President Jesus Locum.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right, let's see. Let me report out on the closed session. We accepted the staff recommendation. And then I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Uh, let's see, bienvenidos. Si necesita interpretación en español, por favor busque la información en el chat. Gracias y bienvenidos. All right, so I posted links for chat in the agenda, as well as how to sign up for comments. And I'll repost those again if more people join. Um, if you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google document that's in the chat. And I know we already have some folks who have signed up already. It looks like you'll have three minutes tonight to speak to the board. If you need Spanish translation, you'll have more time. And if your item is on the agenda, I'll call you during that agenda item. If it's not on the agenda tonight, then we'll call you under oral communication. And keep in mind that under oral communication, we're not able to really have a dialogue or say too much other than answer factual information or connect you up with somebody who can help you because it's not on the agenda. And let's see, as a reminder, this meeting is meant for board business. And with COVID, we've added regular community updates to help keep everyone informed. And the chat feature is open for members of the public. And we welcome you to use it for clarifying questions or making a short comment. And but please refrain from having an ongoing conversation with one of us on chat and maybe just follow up with an email or a phone call the next day if it gets to be that detailed. And then as a reminder, because we're meeting virtually, all votes will be by roll call. And we are also recording the meeting. And I am really excited about tonight's agenda. We're honoring some really amazing employees tonight in a couple of different areas. We're hearing from the school. I see lots of hands clapping of our panelists. Anyway, um, I think this is going to be a really nice night. So I'm glad that we have more participants are joining with every minute. So that's fabulous. So without further ado, let's see, I need to see if we have any changes to the agenda.
Can I make a recommendation, President McAvoy?
Yes.
We have item fifteen point one. And our attorney is here, so if we could move that up maybe after after, right before the community, maybe right after ten point one.
That works for me, fifteen point one there. Is that okay with the rest of the board? Okay, all right. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's Maria and Janet. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
I'm sorry, trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Trustee Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Jesus Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay, all right. Under oral communication, we do have a couple of folks who would like to speak. So the first one, just a moment, I have to move over to this, is Maria Abundis. I'm not sure if that's an O U E. Q U E. Abundis. And you came under the Spanish, so I don't know if you need Spanish translation. I know you're, it looks like you're an employee of ours, so. We're, oh, there we go. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tania. Congratulations. I want to do in Spanish, but at the same time, I want to say in English. Is that fine for you?
Sure.
Okay. So, hola ejecutivos del school board, padres de familia y público en general. Soy María Abundis Owen, supervisora de la cafetería de la escuela Hubert y vicepresidente de operaciones del chapter cinco del sindicato C S E. Quiero aprovechar esta oportunidad para felicitar a los trescientos cincuenta y más miembros clasificados de nuestra sección en la semana de apreciación y reconocimiento al trabajo y dedicación de cada uno de ustedes. Gracias por apoyar a nuestros estudiantes, padre de familia, comunidad en general, y permitir que el distrito escolar de Redwood City continúe su labor de educar y servir a la comunidad. Recordemos que cada uno de nosotros somos una parte importante de esta gran labor. Gracias por continuar apoyando y elaborando aún en estos tiempos difíciles de pandemia y por ser parte de esta gran familia C S E. Feliz semana a cada uno de los trabajadores clasificados, choferes, personal de limpieza, bibliotecarias, asistentes de maestros, personal de cafeterías, secretarias, gerentes de oficina, plomeros, carpinteros, jardineros, electricistas, supervisores de patio, en fin, a cada uno de ustedes que forma parte del área operativa del distrito. Hi, school board members, parents, and general public. This is María Abundis Owen, kitchen leader at Hubert Cafeteria, MVP Operation of C S E Chapter Five Redwood City. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate to the three hundred and fifty and more classified employees members of this school district. This is the Classified Appreciation Week. So I would like to thank, recognize, and appreciate your work and dedication to children, parents, community, and to the Redwood City School District. Always remember that issues are very important in this school district. Thank you so much for supporting and working even harder this pandemic time and for being part of our big C S E family. Happy Classified Week to each of you, bus drivers, custodians, librarians, instructional assistants, office manager, office assistants, plumbers, carpenters, grown men, technician, site supervisor, electrician, lounge people, where everyone who is part of the classified group or the district, thank you so much. Thank you all.
Oh, well, thank you so much, Maria, for coming today and speaking. We did say thank you and celebrated Teacher and Staff Appreciation Month. We did that at our last board meeting through some comments that we made. So it's very nice. Let's keep it going. I'm happy to do it all month. I'm really glad that you made that comment and brought it to our attention. We do talk regularly in our board meetings as we go out to school sites, although we didn't get out there that much this year. But certainly, we do appreciate all the efforts of the classified staff. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and then the next speaker is Maria Stockton. Welcome, Maria.
Good evening. I apologize. I'm not feeling so hot, so I'm going to try and talk clearly. Uh, this is Maria Stockton. I am one of the leaders of C S E Redwood City, California School Employees Association of Redwood City Five. And board members have heard me talk numerous times on issues that primarily on fair and equitable treatment of our classified employees, the recognition and acknowledgement for the work they do. And I don't want to do that tonight because as the young lady before me, Maria Abundis, stated, this is California School Employees Week, recognized by the Senate and throughout the state. And for our classified, excuse me, as for our classified employees, it is a, just always a beautiful thing to see the work you do, whether you are directly linked with a child or you provide a service that keeps the district going. Your service is so needed and so valuable. And I wish you truly felt that from the school district, from your school sites and everybody you work with. Please take pride in your work and know that Redwood City Five truly, truly appreciates you. For the school board, it would be a wonderful thing and a challenge. I challenge each one of you. Yes, we've had the pandemic, but that is going away now. And I don't remember seeing many board members at our school sites in the last year or two. I challenge each one of you, when we come back to school, to go to every school site and meet at least two to three different classified people at that site. Don't just stop in the office and say that. Say, go out and actually meet the people, talk with them, get to know them, the work they do, the service they provide. And let's try and make these people feel just as valued in the Redwood City School District by action as well as the words that we have heard recently. Thank you very much. Happy Classified Week, everybody. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maria. Okay. Let's see. Onward to community and staff recognition, nine point one. Am I turning that over to you? Wait, who?
It's going to be Michelle.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just double checking. Hello, Michelle, welcome. I'll turn this one over to you if that's okay.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I just need Kyle to pull up the presentation. Hope you're all doing well.
I have this, I have the video.
You don't have the slides?
I don't. Let me find the slides again.
Okay. So, well, good evening. I'm Michelle Griffith, and I'm the current Director of Induction. We are here this evening for our two thousand twenty twenty-one induction colloquium to celebrate thirty-four candidates, twenty mentors, and six readers that have worked extremely hard to complete this year's program. You have it?
I don't believe I do now. I have, I have two videos and two slide decks.
It's a slide deck.
Okay.
Do you have mine?
This, yeah, it's not the expanded learning opportunities one. That comes later.
That comes later.
Yeah. So I'm looking for it in all.
Can I put it in the chat?
You can send it to me and I can pull it up. If you just give me the name of it, I can probably find it.
Induction Board Presentation.
Okay, there we go. Okay, give me just a second here.
Remember when we could just go into the board meeting and see people and just read from a list?
I know.
I know. I feel like I've got five devices and all these different files open and anyway, all right, there we go.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you. So the quote you see on the screen is from, is from one of our year one candidates who opened her in first in-person classroom in April of this year. When I spoke with her soon after her opening, she was so ecstatic about being in person and seeing her students. And she said to me, so fun being in person with the kids. I got to decorate my room. Um, meeting Jamie and knowing Jamie, she was one of the first candidates I actually met in person. And I met her and she had the biggest smile on her face. And she was so excited to be in the Redwood City School District. And to fast forward to May, she continues to have that smile and that incredible positive energy. So we are so excited, Jamie, that you chose the Redwood City School District. Thank you, Kyle. Can you move it forward? Good evening. Um, I want to welcome, I want to say hello to Dr. Baker, our superintendent, our school board members, Wendy Kelly, our deputy superintendent, Liz Wolfe, our assistant superintendent, our induction board, and our PAR panel members, and our candidates, our mentors, our readers, and hopefully our families are out there for our, for our candidates. I remember when we were in person before doing this, families would come. And for all, for everyone else that has joined us this evening. I'm so excited to take this opportunity to the, to, to talk about the amazing educators that I have had the absolute privilege to work with this year and to thank our board and our district for their ongoing commitment to this program. Unfortunately, in my first year of teaching in the Redwood City School District, not the dinosaurs were roaming the earth at the time, but we had ditto machines, movie projectors, film strips, chalkboards. And if we were lucky at all, a kind seasoned teacher would take us newbies under their wing and provide us with guidance and support. My seasoned teacher was Kathy Okubo, if you all remember her. Today, we have computers, flat screens, document cameras, email, and a wonderful induction program with an amazing mentor for each of our candidates. That kind of individualized, continuous support by highly qualified seasoned teacher is invaluable. Kyle, can you move forward? Thank you. The colloquium is usually a time for sitting together at tables, reflecting with one another, presenting our experiences, and wrapping up our year face to face. But this year, and at the end of last year, as most everything else, we are doing things a bit different. Instead, we are presenting virtually, and I will be sharing some highlights from this year's program and some next steps for the program's future. We will then have a, have a movie to view our candidates and mentors and hear from a few of our participants. I want to share with you the words of Montana Miller. "Induction makes you so intentional. Every piece of advice my mentor gives me ends in worthwhile results. My mentor is so flexible and understanding." I just have to say, to have that knowledgeable, special person in your corner to guide you, listen to you, and share their experience with you is a pretty priceless gift that can make your first couple of years of teaching so much more effective and rewarding. Okay, Kyle? And now I want to point out just a few highlights for our program for this, from this year. Next slide. First and foremost, the Redwood City School District induction program went through a very thorough audit process for our, of our program through the state of California. As a result of a, of the three-day visit, Redwood City School District was granted full accreditation without any stipulations. This cycle of inquiry occurs every seven years. It is a massive undertaking. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Erin Kacos for all her hard work that she put forth to ensure that the process was seamless and impressive. In our program this year, we had thirty-four candidates, twenty mentors, two lead mentors, and six readers. In, in our ILP, which is the individualized program that each candidate goes through, we included an equity focus. We added this to guide the work of our candidates and our mentor to be sure that our, every student had an eye on them. And we were incorporating whatever strategies we were bringing into the classroom was for each and every student that sat in front of the teachers. Our candidates put in forty to fifty hours of mentoring and coaching. They went through two cycles of inquiry, which included class profiles, data analysis, creating SMART goals, doing PD, reflecting on the effectiveness of the strategies they chose to implement. And all through that process, we're looking at the student results and what they needed to do next. They also participated in two to three observations with their mentors. Their mentors provided them with feedback and guidance after those observations. And our mentors also, besides working on the ILP, provided them just-in-time coaching, which were situations that were coming up with the candidates that the, that the mentors could help them through. Our mentors, our fabulous mentors, met weekly with our candidates. They went, they read the book Art of Coaching so that we could do work around their skills as coaches, as mentors, and what they wanted to do next. I had the privilege of being in two observations with them when they worked with their mentees. And I was able to meet with them afterwards to talk about what the feedback was and what they wanted to do as next steps for improvement. And they also participated in coaching training. In order to make sure that the program was well communicated and there were constant check-ins, every week I sent out a Monday message with a calendar with what was coming up, with opportunities for the candidates and for the mentors. I also hosted office hours so that our mentors and candidates could drop in, talk about what was going on, ask any questions just to be there if they needed anything. And then I did one-to-one check-ins with our coaches and with our, with our candidates to see how things were going, what was coming up for them, what could, what did they see could be improved and what, whatever support they needed. Okay, Kyle, next. Thank you. The colloquium is usually a time, oh, I think I went through this, for sitting together and reflecting with one another, presenting experiences, and wrapping up. Are you, did I, is this, no, sorry, I went to the wrong one. Sorry. Um. Thank you, Kyle. So in reflection to our equity focus, Kayla from Roosevelt said to me that she appreciated the focus on equity. It has been such a privilege to work at a school that has students with diverse backgrounds and needs and to be able to apply the equity lens to my work. Thank you. Next. So we are, I'm going to present to you a few next steps that I believe would strengthen our program and help our candidates and mentors be even more effective in their roles. Next. Thank you. So I want to say, and I want to introduce, that there will be a new director next year, Nicole Crawford, who is currently an assistant principal at part-time at Orion, part-time at Henry Ford. Nicole will be staying with Henry Ford, but also taking on the induction program. We have already begun the transition for Nicole into, into this program. And I'm really happy to say that, that you're going to be in, she's, that, that, the program is going to be in good hands. One of the, the pieces that came out from our candidates was how much they really wanted to reinstate in-person classroom observations. Our year-two candidates said that that was an invaluable experience for them when they were in the program. And our year ones really felt they missed out on this opportunity. So they are very excited to be able to participate in that next year. Through our, through our induction, through our accreditation visit and from some of the gathering of feedback from our mentors and our candidates, I'm hoping that we can look at restructuring, how we gather data. And when we look to smaller chunks rather than some big data pieces that they are asked to, big surveys they are asked to participate in and do more shorter opportunities for feedback and, and more timely feedback so changes can be made quicker. I'm also hoping that we can take that equity focus and develop a rubric for what an effective response would look like and gather samples of responses that we can use as models to show our candidates and our mentors. And we also have an ILP rubric that goes along with the cycles of inquiry. I'm hoping we can flush that out a little bit more and add some descriptors to each part, each performance level, so it gives a little more clarity to what, what we're expecting. Next. Kyle? Thank you. So Julia is one of our amazing music teachers. She also served as a mentor and a reader for us in our program. And when I spoke with her just a couple of weeks ago, she was so ecstatic to be part of this program. And she said that this has been such a joy for me to do. I have thoroughly enjoyed reviewing the candidates' ILPs. I have learned a lot about the candidates as people and educators. So I, it was really great to hear that from a mentor and that her experience in the program was also a learning experience and that she felt that she had gained, gained so much herself. Okay. Kyle? Next. So I just wanted to shout out another thank you for all the amazing support of the board, of our board and Dr. Baker. And I have seen through even our, even some of our hardest times when we had to look at, at programs and make some really difficult decisions, that you have always supported this program. And you've managed to provide the needed resources to keep it going, to keep it growing. And that this support is, further develops the skills and practices of our amazing teachers. It is truly, truly appreciated. So thank you. So we will now take a few minutes to finally see the faces of our candidates and mentors. And I want to thank, I want to give a thank you to Jorge and Erin for creating the next part of this presentation. Thank you. So Kyle, you have to switch it now.
Is the video up now?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Angie Tupel.
Hi, I'm Stacy Colby.
And we work at Henry Ford.
This is my first year as a candidate in the induction program. This program has given me various tools and strategies to develop my craft as an educator. I value the support and guidance of my wonderful mentor.
And as a mentor, I've been fortunate to have my new grade level partner as my mentee. This induction program has given us a platform to discuss curriculum and trends while enhancing the PLC culture at Henry Ford.
My piece of advice for new teachers are don't be afraid to get your feet wet and to lean on your mentors and fellow mentees.
Teaching in Redwood City Schools has meant to me, you know, great supporting cast around me at my school, great teachers within this school. Everyone is so friendly within the district, you know, reaching out, everyone's so quick to respond and give you, you know, the answers you may need.
My induction work has impacted my students by encouraging me to honestly reflect on what they need from me. I was not only able to find strategies that I'll be using for years to come, but also confidence in myself as a teacher to make mistakes, learn from them, and to continue striving to improve my teaching practices.
It's a wonderful thing to work with new teachers and to see how they reflect and grow as the year goes on. I am so grateful that the Redwood City School District has this program. Not only am I supporting a new teacher, but it really helps me reflect on my teaching as well. Not one year has gone by without my candidates showing me something new. My advice for new teachers and mentors is to enjoy learning from each other.
My advice for new teachers is to really get to know your students and make, build connections with them. There's going to be tough days along the way, but the better you know your students, the easier it's going to be to get through those days. Congratulations on being done with either your first or your second year of induction.
So I just, I just want to say, yay, yay. Thank you all. And I just want to, I want to share what an amazing group of people I've been able to work with. And always positive, always happy. Always there for one another as well. And I want to send a, an apology out. I forgot to. Welcome and say hi to Ms. Dr. Montez. I'm so sorry. I was, I knew I was gonna forget something. So I wanted to say welcome to you as well. Thank you so much. So, thank you all. Any, I think that's it. Any questions or?
Well, I think that was amazing. I was watching some of the faces of our panelists, board members and district staff as the slideshow was going on. And I think we just all loved seeing all the teachers, both the mentors and the mentees. It's really fun seeing some of them at the beach and in their rooms doing PE or whatever. So what a great program. And it's interesting, you know, today I was, somebody sent me a message saying, wow, I saw how much money is in Prop 98. Remember how much money we had back in 2010, 2011? And to that very point, Michelle, what you said is we kept this induction program going even then. So really amazing. Hats off to this district for how much of a priority we put into. Training, preparing our, our teaching staff and our staff in general. Janet, you're on the committee. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, that was, that was such a great video and it was really awesome seeing all the faces. And I know I, I said welcome to everybody in the chat because I see you out there in the audience, but. I feel really lucky to be the board rep for induction. It's been such, it's just such a fantastic program. And, you know, when I spoke into the participants and the mentors, everybody has echoed just what a wonderful program it is and how lucky they feel to be a part of it. And I do love, Michelle, that you have added the equity portion too. You know, through our work with NUA, a lot of us had talked about, you know, how do we make sure that, you know, our new, our new teachers are getting that, that equity focus also. And that training. So I think that's a fantastic addition. And just congratulations to everybody and thanks for being here in the audience tonight. It's fantastic. I wish we could be in person doing this.
I think I would like to say that I could see the enthusiasm and the joy of the candidates and the mentors. You could see it in their expression and their, you know, just everything. And so I do appreciate. The help that the mentors gave the candidates and the candidates to, you know, put efforts to be better teachers for kids in Redwood City. So thank you.
I want to say congratulations. Sorry, go ahead, Maria.
Oh, you go ahead now.
Okay, I wanted to say congratulations to the candidates as well and thank everyone. Also, Michelle, thank you. It sounds like Nicole is gonna be the next director. So congratulations and thanks for all the work that you've done. I feel really lucky as a board member to join with this program. So thanks to the board and Dr. Baker for making sure that this program's there. And the thing I kept thinking about watching this was like, this would be a remarkable presentation, you know, in a normal year. And I just keep thinking back over this year and how the, you know, the candidates, the mentors, the, you know, and the readers just all had to adapt for that too. Yet another thing that had to, to adapt for it. So it was great. Thanks a lot.
And I would just like to echo my thanks as well. Through all the years that I've been involved with this district, this is one of the programs that I think really makes a difference. Because the quality of the teacher impacts each and every student. And thank you to the mentees and the mentors for volunteering to share the knowledge and for making us all a better district. And Dr. Baker, thank you for always supporting this program. You have always been one of their champions. So thank you, everybody, and congratulations.
All right, well said. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. And again, congratulations to everybody in the audience and all of our mentees and mentors. All right. And we have another level of recognition. Our retirees, I believe, are next. Yes, recognition of our retiring staff. So this is always bittersweet, right? We're happy for our staff that they have an opportunity to move on with another phase of their life, which is always wonderful. But we're always sad that we're going to lose them. Although I will say many of them come back and. Consult or work some part-time or volunteer with us. So you're always welcome back. All right, Dr. Baker or Wendy Kelly? I don't know who's.
Yeah, I'll start. This is real different compared to what we normally do. As Elisa and Janet know, and Maria, Mike and Cecilia, so we didn't get to do this last year in this, in a format that we normally do. So normally what we do is we take our classified and our certificated staff out for a celebration. It's normally at a local restaurant within Redwood City. And because of pandemic, we're now doing this virtually. And I would like to congratulate the 35 classified and certificated people that are retiring this year from the Redwood City School District. It gives me great honor to acknowledge each and every one of you for all your hard work and dedication you have put forth. To support the students of the Redwood City School District. So there is a video, I know there's a slide, no, there's a video that was put together by. Erin Caicos and Eliana Garcia with the help of Jorge, of course, Quintana. So Kyle, I think you have that, right? You said you did.
I do. I do have this one.
Perfect.
I want to thank them personally for the amazing work that they have done throughout the years. I'm honored to be their colleague. I'm honored to be part of the district with them and I wish them all the best of luck. One in particular, I'd like to wish a wonderful retirement to someone who's been very special to me. And Lisa Sugar is just an amazing teacher. I have learned so much from her. It's, it's just a wonderful thing to be married to a teacher as a teacher. Again, I wish every retiree the best of luck and I wish all the inductees the most fruitful careers that you could possibly have. So thank you very much.
Love you, Mr. Bartok.
Oh, that's great. Kevin, thank you. It's a good reminder of what a big family we are, right? In fact, I saw one of the daughters of my kindergarten teacher was in the induction program, Ms. Abby Wilkerson. So that's really fun to see. And of course, both you and Lisa have been big contributors to Redwood City. All right, board members, I'm sure we have something we'd like to say. So go ahead and we'll just make the rounds and then I'll say a few words.
Okay, I'll go first. Congratulations to all of the retirees. I saw many, many familiar faces from Tiomara, who I used to check in with my son every morning. To Linda, who I've known since she was way back in Adelante, left and came back. There are so many of you out there, both teachers and classified. And you've made a big difference in the lives of our students and the people in our community with your dedication. With going the extra mile. You have all done a marvelous job and I thank you very much and wish you the best in retirement. And I hope you will come back and help us out whenever you have a moment or two. Even if it's long distance. It'd be great to see each of you. And again, thank you and congratulations. Cheers.
Yeah, I wanted to say thanks to, to the, yeah, the 30-plus retirees that were recognized tonight. Congratulations and thank you. Collectively hundreds of years of service to Redwood City School District. It's countless kids on top of that. It's, you know, it's just, it's great across facilities or at the district office, you know, and of course, everyone that's working on the school sites. Yeah, it's a tremendous amount of impact. So congratulations. As Maria said, I wish you the best in retirement. We hope that you'll continue to contribute in Redwood City when the opportunity comes around. And thank you.
I would like to say, of course, thank you and congratulations on your retirement. Thank you especially for your dedication to the Redwood City School District. I am sure everyone made a big impact on every kid you guys, you know, saw. So I do appreciate from the bottom of my heart, everything that you guys have done for our kids. And again, enjoy life. There's another world out there. So have fun and enjoy every minute.
I would just echo my, my thanks and congratulations for your dedication, your commitment to the Rhodes School District, who are students. And I know many of you, and as Elisa said, it's bittersweet to see you go. It's exciting for you and it's sad for us. But I wish you the best. And I do want to read, there's a note from Romero Carranza in the chat that I think only went to the panelists. So I wanted to read that out. It says, "To all retirees, especially to the ones from Hoover, congrats on your retirement. You inspired countless generations of students to achieve their full potential. Your wise, kind and patient presence always filled your classrooms and invigorated the entire community. We will miss you, the awesome person that you are. On behalf of the Hoover community, we wish you the best from your retirement day forward." So thanks, everyone. This is again, one that I just really wish we could be doing the celebration in person.
Yeah, wow, I'm, I really feel very emotional looking at this list of individuals than I do every year. And, you know, when we're in person, we have an opportunity, we go through and we'll say, you know, we'll share stories with each person and memories. And when I'm looking at this list, not only have I had the, the real honor and pleasure of working, oh my gosh, with many of you quite closely. You know, and such important things for kids, right? That's why we're here for kids. And I'm looking at the list. I mean, Karen, you were my daughter as a nurse, I think, you know, handling a boo-boo with her way back when she was little, I remember. And, you know, Anna in the office, how many countless times did my kids go to you or I went with you for you or our administrators did? Linda, I've so enjoyed working with you the last few years on equity. It's just been an immense pleasure, really. You have helped move our district forward. Trish Perez and the human resources, my goodness, how many things have we gone through together? Just making the district a better place for all and all the different positions that you've had. Naomi Hunter, I see on the list. I don't know if Naomi's in the participants tonight. But what an amazing work she did with us and communications and really helping our district go forward. And I could go on and on and we don't have all night and I don't think you want to stay here till midnight. But I really want to say thank you to everyone on this list. I'm looking at, it covers almost every position in our district. And kind of going back to what Maria started, the meeting with how important our classified are and all the different positions there. Our teachers, we recognize tonight always how important they are. And our administrators, we all keep the glue going for the kids. So just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Really appreciate knowing you. And the legacy you leave behind will be here forever in the hearts and minds of the students that you. And the legacy you leave behind will be here forever in the hearts and minds of the students that you have, have been with. So thank you. And I think Wendy wanted to say something, and then I'm sure Dr. Baker would like to finish things up. Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you, Elisa. That was really nicely said. So being in HR is, is bittersweet to that point. We welcome in all these amazing new staff members every year, every month with our classified staff. And then there's these moments that are bittersweet where we say goodbye and wish everyone the best on their next chapters, knowing how much they fully have contributed to our district. We have mentors. We have amazing teachers that have just really excelled our students in so many ways. Walking through campuses, we see our custodians that are just kind and generous to our kids and helping them, our office staff. So it's really quite a community and a family in the Redwood City School District. And I hear those words echo as years progress and people come back to visit us. And so to all of our retirees, our classified staff and our teachers, I really want to say, this is a, a quick goodbye, more like a farewell for a short period of time, because we really hope that you stay connected with us. And come back, the HR doors are always open. So thank you again.
Thank you, Wendy. I do see, normally we take it through the Google Docs, but I see a hand raised, and I think for this retirement celebration. Carrie, did you want to speak to the retirees? Carrie Schmidt? Otherwise, I'll have you fill out a speaker card if it's a future agenda item. Yes, okay. Kyle, can you bring Carrie over?
I did. She has the ability to speak.
Oh, oh, okay, welcome.
Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I just want to take the moment because there's so many of my friends from, that I've worked with from Hoover who are retiring. I just had to recognize them. But I do want to say to everybody that I wish everyone a great retirement to all the, the people who are retiring. But I especially would like to say thank you to Lisa Sugar, Jeanette Serrano, Peter Bartok. And I also have been working with Aouda Bartok this year very closely. So you're all wonderful teachers. I have learned so much from you, and I value you as professionals and as people. And I, I wish you all the very best in the coming years, and I hope that we can see each other again soon. Best of luck. Thank you.
Oh, how nice, Carrie. Thank you. And Michelle Butler, if we can move her over into a speaker too. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I didn't realize this was on the agenda. And like Carrie, there are so many Hoover people moving on, and I'm getting old, so there's more people every year. But these people have so touched my life. And Lisa Sugar, single-handedly has like mentored myself and Jackie, another member of our special ed team, and then Jackie mentored another member of our special ed team. So practically, our whole Hoover special ed team goes back to Lisa Sugar. And when I think of the countless children that she touched, not only through her own career, but through all of us, that she got started on ours, it's just endless. And that could be said for every teacher that is retiring tonight. And of course, every classified person that has done the countless things they've done, our nurses, our maintenance and custodians, and our district office leaders and personnel. And together, I know one board member said hundreds, but it's probably more like thousands. And what a legacy. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Dr. Baker, would you like to close and honor our retirees one more time?
Just one more great big thank you to all the retirees tonight. I know the majority of these people that are on this list and also the people from Hoover. There are a couple of them that actually were teachers with me while I was the principal there. And even though there's one that went on to a different school site, but came back along with Dr. Montez, congratulations to every one of you, including you, Linda. You're going to all be very much missed. And again, thank you so much for your dedication to the kids in the Redwood City School District. We couldn't be here without your work, energy, tenacity, and making sure that every day you're in the classroom or you're a custodian at the school or you're an office staff member at the school. We need to all work together to make this organization work. So thank you so much for your hard work. Enjoy retirement and congratulations. Big applause for all of you. And, and just to let the board know, we did send out the plaques. Ellie got those all out. So hopefully you got them. They were in the mail. Some went last week, some went early this week, if I'm not mistaken, right, Ellie?
Opened out last week.
Perfect. And for those of you that just turned in the paperwork, it should, they should be coming, I would imagine, within the next week or so. Perfect. Great. Thanks again.
All right, thank you. All righty. So we're on to, thanks again, everybody. We're on to 10.1, Orion Alternative Schools Multicultural Presentation. All right, Ms. Catherine Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees, and on all of our cabinet here, and all of our parents and participants out there showing up to share in our celebration, multicultural celebration this year. It's amazing, and it's, it's an amazing feat that we were able to do this in distance learning and as well as hybrid learning. So I'm thrilled to be able to bring this effort and share all of the things that our parents in both Parent Participation Program and Man and Immersion Program, and our students and teachers have been working and collaborating on in order to immerse our students into Kenya this year. So Kyle, I'm going to have you help me out in going to the different slides. And then we do have some video. We won't be able to share all of our video, but we definitely want the audience to be able to experience a little bit of what our, our student population got to experience. So we kicked off our multicultural this school year with Lunar New Year, which we got to experience and share with you back in March. And following Lunar New Year, and we were still in distant time, we worked with our teachers to bring forward multicultural for this school year. I think that we missed a slide. Can we go, there was one more slide before this one, Kyle, blue, and it just. No. Okay, maybe, maybe not. So multicultural is a cornerstone of the Orion Parent Participation Program. And the intent is not just for students to go into the study of another country on a surface level, but to really immerse our students and our community into diverse perspectives and other cultures. And so our students and our families, together with the teaching staff, collaborate on learning and immersing to another culture and to really go deep and appreciate other cultures. And so we were able to do some of it in distance learning through our Wednesday assemblies. So our introduction to Kenya began on our Wednesday assemblies, and we have a great attendance at our assemblies. 60, 80, 90 kids showing up to meet our students and our participants from, from Kenya. So they're coming to live to us from Kenya. And so these are some of the highlights of our Wednesday assemblies over March and April and May. Go ahead and to the next slide, Kyle. So we have, there should be a video in here, Kyle. There she is. So Sasha, sharing a little bit. So Kyle, can you just put this a little bit, this is an independent project at home. So the student shared via seesaw what she had been learning about Kenya. So we just share a little bit, Kyle.
Is that coming through where you see this, the, the video up, or is it still on my deck?
Yeah, we can see. All right, thank you, Sasha. Thank you, Kyle. Go to the next slide. So through immersing the students and families at, at home and, and distance learning, families put together a community building and fundraising event where we had Josephine in Kenya giving us live cooking classes from home. And I tried the recipe. It was delicious. I tried it again without her help, and it wasn't as good. So students immersing themselves with Josephine, and it was, it was a great way for everybody to connect with each other and to do, participate in the cooking class. Go ahead to the next one, Kyle. And one of our assemblies, we had Sam from Tour Guide, and while he was in, while he was in Kenya, he was sharing with our students some of the different landscape in Kenya, and we learned about the, some of the fragile ecosystems. And flamingos are part of the fragile ecosystem in, in Kenya. And so to represent our, our part of Kenya's ecosystem and is, flocking our yards as a fundraiser. And I think that we, Elisa, you got a chance to participate in flocking?
I did, I did. And actually, it was fun because I caught them flocking me. So I got to see some students this year, which was great. I loved it.
Yeah. So part of our fundraiser, check out, at the end, you can check out our website, is participating in fundraising. It's a great opportunity to just have some fun with students, graduation presence, as you can be flocked. And kids are also learning about the ecosystems in Kenya. Go ahead and go to the next one. So multicultural is really new for many of us staff at Orion as we have been learning as a new staff from our heritage parents at Orion, what it is for hands-on learning in multicultural. It was a little sad that last year we didn't get to complete it. We were prepping up for getting ready for multicultural, and then, of course, the pandemic hit. And we, we were still wanting our students to have a way to be able to engage in this experience of going deep into another culture. So everybody rallied together to really bring some hands-on learning in the classroom that also, I mean, in the home, sorry, in the home. But that's connected to our school in, via our weekly assemblies. So our parent volunteers, it's, it's a, it's really a collaborative effort. Our parent volunteers put together some amazing projects. So the, the parents studied some of the projects that would be relevant to the culture that they're studying and created some really hands-on learning opportunities that kids were sharing via seesaw and videos and Google Classroom. Go ahead, Kyle. Just, I wanted to point out that not just cooking at home, but that feeling really connected to the, the Josephine while she was presenting. And that was exciting for all of us. And the smiles on their faces, I have to point out this one student, he's our fifth grader right there. Christopher, I have never seen a smile as big as Christopher. And Christopher has done some videos with Nidas, and he's done a lot of steam projects. But I think him cooking the ugali recipe, that's the biggest smile I've ever seen on Christopher. So it's, it's pretty amazing to, to have him feel connected to school in that way, and all the kids to feel connected to, to Kenya in this way. And it's, that's teacher, that teacher Jen, is one of our parents, but also a previous teacher, just giving a lesson. You can go to the next slide, Kyle. I want to make sure we have time to see some of our kids in action. So we, our student council representatives, they're, they're elected by their peers, worked with our amazing AmeriCorps volunteer to bring forward some of our students' passion for being park rangers after studying some animals and wildlife in Kenya. And there should be a video attached to this, Kyle, of our stu, some of our students as park rangers.
This here is an arwolf. Arwolves have long and sticky tongues that are very good for eating termites. However, the arwolf is not related to the arvark, even though arwolves eat like them. Arwolves are yellowish with vertical black stripes and a bushy black-tipped tail. Those are my top three fun facts about arwolves. Here with me, I have the Taita apollis. This is one of the world's rarest birds. This bird is found only in Kenya's Taita Hills. Sadly, this bird is critically endangered. It is endangered because of habitat loss. There are only 150 of them left in the wild. In less than 20 years, 60% of the species has died off. Conservation efforts are underway to save this species. This is the northern white rhino. It lives in Kenya. It weighs 500 to 1,000 pounds. It lives up to 50 years. There are around two of them left, and there are, there's one other type of rhino.
I think that's good, Kyle. I think everybody gets a flavor for our, our wonderful park rangers who are representing wildlife in Kenya. And then as well as Wednesday art lessons led by our AmeriCorps volunteer. Go ahead, Kyle, to the next one. So to bring it to life, now that we get to be on campus, it's bringing the installation to life on campus. We, our parents are working with Chalk Granny to bring her, if you ever have a chance to drive off on Avenue Delora, Chalk Granny has brought some of the Kenya landscape, both modern cityscape and some of the Maasai wears onto our campus on Avenue Delora. And, and then families who are in distance learning get an opportunity to experience it during our drop-off, distribution materials and library times. There's one more slide, Kyle. And so more is coming today at the Wednesday, the Wednesday assembly. We had our photographer sharing photos of Kenya, but a campus installation is happening where the projects are coming to life on campus. For visitors, it is safe distance on the perimeter to be able to experience. So if you have a chance, starting Friday, come take a look on the side of Avenue Delora, the installation of, of Kenya coming out onto Orion campus. So we look forward to more. We have a couple more. So we look forward to more. We have a couple more assemblies to, to, to final and wrap up our multicultural this year. I just want to really thank the parents because, and, and the teachers for this brainchild. And I really look forward to multicultural next year to really fully experience it. This was my first little taste of it, but parents have assured me that the actual development and the teachers have said from Heritage Orion that there's so much more. And so I can't wait to start on that endeavor next year. So I want to invite everybody to, to come take a look for this year. If you want to know more, I think on the, is at the last slide, there might be a link, but I'm not sure, Kyle, I might have, I might have had it in my, added that later, I think. Just images of the photography. Now, so go to the Starship Orion website and there's lots of information about the, all the work that the parents did. And we welcome anybody to do any of the same projects at home. There's lots to learn and the parents created a lot of learning videos as well. Thank you, parents.
Alright. Thank you very much for that presentation. I know that's a highlight for board members every year. We love to come over and visit the classrooms and immerse ourselves in the various countries that are being highlighted. So that was the next best thing, the virtual world. So when is the, you said Friday, we can come over. Are those going to be up next week also or just on Friday or?
So I know the parents are starting on the work tomorrow. And so the installation is, is, it should be up there for the next couple of weeks because we do want people to enjoy it. We know that, you know, we do have weekenders who do visit our perimeter of our campus as well. And we've been pretty good about respecting Chalk Granny so that we anticipate good luck on that as well on the installation. So in the next couple of weeks, you know, come on over. I would come maybe on the earlier part of the installation rather than the tail end, just the week. You can see, they're going to be, we have Little League there on site too. So we want to make sure that you get to see the complete installation rather than the possible end, end product. But whatever, whatever part you come in, I know the parents are doing an awesome job because the kids are so excited about it. Our hallway for the kindergarten students at home and on site, they did these warrior shields. I mean, these, so we have our parent Beth and her husband have done these giant warrior shields for all of our kinder students. And they're lining the hallways.
Anyone else like to say anything?
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I know it was, it's a big event for Orion and having to do it virtually. I'm impressed. I'm impressed. That's great. It's fantastic.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for sharing. I, like Lisa said, I love to go whenever I could and you guys did an amazing job being that it's virtual. So I'm looking forward to the next year as well.
Alright, well, thank you to all the parents and all the teachers and Catherine, thanks to you. Okay. And thanks to the students who are doing all the hard work, right?
And our parents. Yeah, they did awesome.
Yes, and our parents, exactly. Alright, okay. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. Alright, so we're on to 15.1, which is the lease.
Yes, this is the lease for the 3150 Granger Way. This evening we have Janet Mueller and Dominic Dutre and we also have Joe Wagner, who is, has this proposal that has, he's worked very diligently with Janet and also with Dominic on this proposal and the resolution that's coming before you tonight. And so you know that we started this process after we closed schools in 2019 and the Granger site is the old Alonte School. And we first had a tenant, we thought, which was Stratford, but then as you all will recall, there were different items that took place that we just couldn't agree upon when it came to the city and the city wanted some other pieces to take place during, or before they even moved in. And they pulled out of the lease during that period of time talking Stratford that they had when they could pull out. And since then, I know Dominic, along with Janet, went out for additional proposals. And this is the proposal that we brought forth to you previously at one time in closed session to give us your comments on the proposal. What you have before you tonight is the resolution. And if you have any questions, both Dominic, Janet and Mr. Wagner are here tonight. And what I will do is I will probably turn it over to Dominic and to Janet since they've been so closely on this for the last four to six weeks.
Sure, I'll just kick it off and then I'll hand it, this Dominic Dutre, and then I'll hand it off to Janet. I think that Superintendent Baker did a, did a great job as did the agenda and just kind of laying out. This has been a long process. This, this lease should look very, very familiar because it was the one that the board actually approved in the latter part of 2019 with Stratford. We actually used it as a base lease. And so the proposal before you tonight is really identical with some, the, probably the biggest difference being the abatement of rent for the first couple of years. Giving the tenant, in this case Wagner Schoolhouse, the opportunity to build up enrollment at the site. Now, if he goes beyond that and we have an FTE calculation, I know there was a question about partial FTEs and that full-time equivalent students. If full-time equivalent students go up, then Joe would be thrilled, that being Joe Wagner to the owner of the school as would we. And so we have a mechanism by which the rent could actually increase more rapidly over those first couple of years that it has baited. But we're thrilled to, to have Mr. Wagner. We had a community meeting with the neighborhood. I'm not sure some neighbors are, are on the meeting now and certainly can comment if they'd like to, but we had a fantastic meeting. He was present, answered all of their questions. It was a long extended meeting. He offered to meet up with them in the future. If they wanted to do that, he provided written responses to questions that he was not able to answer then. But anyway, as Summa Lieutenant Baker noted, myself and Janet Mueller, legal counsel and Joe Wagner are available for questions. Should you have any? Janet?
Thank you, Dominic. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Dominic mentioned we did approach this with the Stratford lease as a starting point. But it, but it does deviate in a couple of respects. And I think Mr. Wagner worked very closely with us to try to meet some of the board's interests. And in particular, just flagging a couple of items. You may recall the proposals for a 10-year lease with some renewal terms. There's been some concern on the part of the board about what happens if at the end of 10 years we want to reopen the school or we have a need for the property. And so we were able to work that term in as well with a two-year notice requirement. We want at the end of the 10 years to take the school site back for a district use. And in the absence of that, you know, the Wagner Schoolhouse would have the option to continue on with a process for rebenching the rent at that point. That was another interest of the district that at the 10-year mark, you know, rather than just rely on what we believe now is a appropriate level of escalation every year, we would in fact go back out and go through an appraisal process to try to revenge that rent. So those were, I think, some of the major concessions and discussions we had along the way. And in addition, we have very few contingencies in this arrangement. Really, the only contingency is a four-month period of time for Mr. Wagner and his company to obtain any additional permits or entitlements that are needed for the site. I think we're most of the way there with the city of Redwood City. There could be some other permissions and things that he needs to get before he can operate. But it's a fairly limited contingency. And I know that was one of the concerns that we had in this environment and with the prior, with the prior tenant. So I'm happy to answer any questions and also I do see Joe Wagner here too. And I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions about his program, his plans, you know, sort of the nature of what he does in the education context.
Board members, did we have any questions?
I actually just want to make one comment because there's a question in the chat and I've gotten a few messages on my phone. To clarify, the agreement is with Wagner Schoolhouse LLC, but the school itself is Harper School. Is that correct?
That is correct. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I had a couple of questions. Dominic, I'd sent these this afternoon and it sounds like you did get them. So I'm just, and maybe this, I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. Wagner. And welcome, Mr. Wagner. I, I think overall it's a, it's a fair lease and all of that. And certainly if this goes through, look forward to a relation, you know, a relationship of the lease and all of that. I was curious, because this was sort of new from what we had seen before. When you're accounting for the FTE, there's some mention of potentially part-time students. So those that might be coming Monday, Wednesday, Friday are those coming half-days. And they would be a prorated FTE or a prorated student, basically. And I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit about, I guess I was assuming that the students would be coming full-time and I didn't know. Anyway, could you just talk a little bit about that? I'm trying to figure out how that might affect the base rent that we'd be getting the first few years. And then it just brought up questions for me about the program that you're offering.
Sure. So we'll have both preschool. First, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So we'll have both preschool and elementary school. And where you get those part-time kids is with the preschool. So for kindergarten through eighth grade eventually, you can assume that all those kids would be full day. One kid would equal one full-time equivalent. But at the preschool level, we'll have both half-day children and full-day children. So if a child is coming just a half a day for five days a week, that's a half a child. And there might be one half a child in the morning and another half a child in the afternoon. So it might be John Smith is in the morning and Kate Allen is in the afternoon. That would equal one child. And each child would pay about half of a full rate of tuition, maybe a little bit more. So that's where that basically comes from. You might also have, you can imagine toddlers might only come two days a week and pre-K kids might come three days a week. So that's where you're getting that sort of prorated student. And that's very typical to say, I mean, I should just mention that I was actually the founder of Stratford School. And that's what we did there as well. In other words, we had a number of kids that were half-day. So we might have had 100 kids making up one classroom. So you can imagine having 24 three-day kids in the morning, 24 two-day kids in the morning and just the same in the afternoon. So that would be 96 kids, but they would basically equal 24 full-time equivalents.
Right. So the idea is that any one time, the maximum number of students is the 546, which is basically what we've had an agreement to, to do then at that site.
That's exactly right.
Right, right. Okay, okay. Because I know that that's been a point of conversation with the community as well, just in terms of not overloading the site for a variety of reasons. So, okay, that, that's helpful. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you. And then I did have one other question. And Dr. Baker, I don't know if you had a chance to see the questions that I sent.
I didn't have, they're sent today.
Okay. Yeah. So this one was, and maybe I missed it in the lease, but one of the things we had talked about is if in fact those first couple of, the first few years, you're paying less, let's say you have less students on campus and you're paying less rent. Did you have a conversation about us being able to use the spaces that are not being used? So let's say you've got five empty classrooms because they're not being used and you're not paying rent to us for those because you're at a lower number. If we had any overflow issues, remember we had had that conversation, but I didn't see anything in the lease. And I don't know if you ever had that conversation or what happened with it.
So we did have the conversation. And we ultimately agreed for a few different reasons to not pursue putting that in the lease. Primarily, the concerns were because of the uncertainty about enrollment and how that would lay out with the space. There were concerns about whether we could quickly run afoul of the terms of the permit from the city. And you'll recall, there's a great deal of concern about traffic in the neighborhood. And so concerns about just how that might actually play out depending on how enrollment worked out. I think that was the principal concern. And then we talked internally with staff. We, we decided we weren't clear on what sort of use we thought based on the layout of the campus and these other concerns might actually work. And so ultimately, and in light of other kinds of concessions, parts of the discussion agreed that we didn't really see that we might benefit too terribly much from preserving that right. Welcome anybody else's comments and response to that question. Yes, that definitely was part of our conversation.
And that was one of the, one of the key components of the use permit that we obtained from the city was a phasing of enrollment, but also perhaps most, most importantly, relative to the surrounding neighborhood and their concerns about traffic is that if they exceed those numbers at a certain point, which we're currently anticipating would occur in, I think, the beginning of year three, the tenant is required to install 1,000-foot drop, drop-off pickup, pickup, drop-off lane within the property itself to, to basically eliminate the, the challenge of queuing on Granger and other adjacent streets. So that was one of the concerns too, was just not knowing how to count those numbers vis-à-vis those traffic issues. Because there's a lot of different things that trigger from a traffic perspective once certain numbers are hit. So that, that was part of the complexity. I should also note, there were a number, we did bring that up, we did have that conversation. There were also a number of other negotiating points that, that Mr. Wagner, I thought was rather gracious in terms of working with the district and enhancing rent was one of them and working on a number of other issues, including the termination, right? The, the ability for us to rebench rent after 10 years. That was not part of the original proposal. So it was just one of the, part of the negotiating items.
I would just add, and I, I agree with all that. And I would just say, given my discussion with the neighbors, I really feel very strongly that the, the lifeblood of our, excuse me, the lifeblood of our school to some extent is making sure that the neighbors are happy with the job we're doing and we can provide them certain assurances that will, will abide by, in other words, it's not just going to be talked, it will actually abide by what we're going to say, we're going to do as far as traffic goes. So the use permit limits us to, for instance, 110 students in the first year. And we'll abide by that, but we'll also obviously not quite have control over things if there's other uses going on there. So while we can assure them that, hey, listen, we're going to only be 110 students, we're only going to generate the traffic that 110 students would generate. If there's other uses going on, it, it becomes that much more difficult. So I certainly appreciated it and it was, you know, probably is, you know, definitely for us, but also I think for the neighborhood to make sure that we were, had one entity that was able, that they, able to answer to them and saying, hey, this is what's going on here. And, you know, that kind of the buck stops with us.
So are you saying the conditional use permit from the city only allows 110 students on the site?
For the first year. That's correct. In other words.
It ramps up, it ramps up over time. And that was part of the, the impetus for the city. They wanted to be able to basically require certain traffic improvements and, and processes as attendance went up. So it'll, it'll eventually get to that number that we're all hoping we'll get to from both the district and from Mr. Wagner and his school. But with those will come some traffic requirements of the cities. Because they had us actually do a traffic demand management plan to accompany the use permit. That's, so this is all part of that.
And certainly, you know, one of the best, you know, one of the first things I'll do would be to apply to the city for an occupancy permit and a, a business license. And ideally what they'll do is say, hey, listen, the hard work that Dominic did getting the use permit over the last year or so, that your use conforms to that. Be a good citizen, do a good job. If, if things, if we start to grow more quickly and we can achieve more enrollment, one of the things that I could do is go back to the city and the neighborhood and say, hey, listen, what if we put the driveway in earlier? You know, it'd be in everybody's interest to have more. You know, it'd be in everybody's interest to have more of the pickup and drop-off happening on, well, it's got to happen on-site anyway, but as we grow, making sure that there's enough room for folks to queue on-site. So there's that kind of upside. And it's obviously would be a big help to me if that happened as soon as possible and it'd be a big help to the district if that happened as soon as possible. And I think the city would be amenable to it. You know, I can't speak for them, but I, I just don't see, I don't see them objecting to somebody implementing what they're recommending earlier than what they're recommending. You know, getting the job done earlier if, if the enrollment requires it.
That's helpful to hear. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I think one more comment I wanted to make just for the sake of the public, because I know this is going to come up. But this agreement does state that the blacktop in the field are available to the public after school hours. So after 4:00 PM on Monday through Friday and on weekends. So I want to make sure that everybody knows that is in the agreement.
Yeah. And also, one of the other things that was brought to my attention is if you look at the agreement and the way the rent starts in years one and three, and then it ramps up to the more full rent in year four at a minimum, it could go faster as we just talked about. That in addition to that, Wagner Company, I don't have the name quite right, but your company would also assume basically the cost of maintenance and improvements and such on the site, which is also a savings to the district. Because of course, you know, the public, one of the reasons why we went through this process is because we had a surplus property, right? Because our enrollment has declined over the years. And we also have a general fund need for additional money. So this will help. So in addition to the rent coming in, we also will not be paying some of the, the ongoing maintenance and capital improvements and things the next 10 years. Assuming that all goes well with the lease. Yeah.
That's exactly right. And not only that, even though the rent ramps up over a few years, that cost reduction is immediate. So as soon as we start the lease this summer, all those costs should roll off the district's budget and roll over to mine.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments? Well, thank you very much to Dominic and Janet and Mr. Wagner. And I imagine Priscilla was involved in this, the whole team. Dr. Baker, thank you. All right. This has been a long haul for us, Mr. Wagner. You've probably heard some of the stories. We've been at it for a while. So welcome to our community. We haven't done the vote yet. I guess I should take the vote first. I'm getting ahead of myself here. All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, Maria and Janet, roll call vote, please.
Trusty Lawson. I'm sorry, Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Lawson.
Aye.
Trusty Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I'm really looking forward to opening up in Redwood City and working with you all and the neighborhood, being a good citizen.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Janet.
All right.
Did you see your daughter?
Janet.
Daughter was on the first video. Her daughters were one of our teachers at Roosevelt.
Oh, in the induction program. Oh, that's wonderful. Oh, that's great. Okay. All right. So I believe we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. Okay, so we have the bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Maria and Janet, roll call vote, please.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Lawson.
Aye.
Trusty Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right, we're on to 12.1. And this is an adoption of resolution 2020, 22. And this is, yeah, the CDC ornamental fencing project. So I don't know if anybody had any questions. I know I did and I got those answered. I was wondering how much, how, how much fence there actually was for that amount of money. And there's actually a fair amount of fence and gating and all that. You sent me a nice map associated with it. So thank you, Don. Any questions that folks had?
Yeah, I got that, I got that too for a similar question. But the one, what I wanted to ask, Tom, just to make sure I understood in your reply, there were multiple bids, right? This, for, for this, this wasn't the only bid that, that came in?
That's correct. We had six contractors show up to the mandatory walk and we had three bids come in on bid day.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
All right, Mike and then Janet and roll call vote, please.
Trusty Wells.
Aye.
Trusty Lawson.
Aye.
Trusty Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much, Don and your team. Appreciate it.
Have a great night. Love it.
Okay, thank you. You too. Okay. Let's see, sorry, I'm trying to figure out where I am. Okay, discussion items. Okay. All right, we're on to 13.1, reopening plan.
Perfect. Kyle, do you have this? I think you have the slide deck, correct? Yes, he does. Great. Here we go. No, this is, this is, that's, that's coming later. There should be another one that says reopening.
Doesn't look like I have that one.
I have it. Do you want me to show it?
Yeah, can you, can you, yeah, I've got it all, so I can start sharing. I can't see anything if I'm sharing. All right, here it is. Perfect. All right, so let's begin. Liz, if you'll go on to the, so a little bit about COVID testing and vaccination, or the first slide, the next slide. All right, here we go. So it's been a real busy month in regard to the pandemic and the guidance and the planning that's been taking place. So you can all remember that back on May 10th, the CDC and the FDA announced the recommendation of the Pfizer vaccine for youth ages 12 to 15. So California is moving forward. So before this meeting, right before closed session, I was talking to, it's an entity outside of the San Mateo County that is going to start providing vaccines for students within the Redwood City School District and other districts within the county. And so we are going to partner with the Sequoia High School District along with County Health and the County Office of Education to have a vaccine clinic at two school sites in Redwood City, one being the Sequoia High School and one being Hoover School in Redwood City. And I got the date today. It's firmed for us. It will be next Thursday, the 27th, from 3 o'clock to 7 at Hoover School. We will be getting the flyers and getting that all ready to send out to our families for the one here in, in the Redwood City School District. The Sequoia High School District will do the 28th, which is Friday, from 3 to 7 at Sequoia High School. So on our flyer, we will have both locations, both dates and both times. And I encourage all our families to take advantage of this. Next slide, please, Kyle. So vaccination in our community, we have, of course, parents can go to their own pediatrician and go in that direction. There are also many county-sponsored mass vaccination events at San Mateo County, at Sematol Event Center. And there are community clinics that are popping up, not only in Redwood City, but in San Mateo and East Palo Alto, at our own Therox Clinic. And I will have Jorge put those, put that information with the times and the places on the Friday update that goes out to the community, so everyone has it. Again, these are some you need to make appointments and some you're just walking in. Next slide. So Wendy, start here with the employee updates in regard to testing.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. So I wanted to give the board an update regarding employee testing. We do have various options for employees to test, one of them being in human resources. Should employees want to utilize this avenue rather than go to their provider? And we are using the rapid antigen test. And so it's an optional opportunity. Today was one of our days of testing. And then again, on Wednesday, June 2nd, keeping that every two-week cycle through the end of the school year. Of course, the staff at Taft and Henry Ford are still continuing, the entire staff at Henry Ford and Taft are continuing testing as part of the pilot MOU that we agreed upon earlier in the year. So that is still occurring for employees specifically. And then, as I mentioned in a prior board meeting, should we do, should we have a symptomatic employee, there would be a required referral for the healthcare provider to test. And so that would, that would be in our normal course and following the pandemic framework in Cal OSHA. Thank you. Oh, and here we go, the Cal OSHA. As I mentioned, sorry, that got moved to the next slide. For Cal OSHA, and I've mentioned this in previous board meetings, unfortunately, unfortunately, Cal OSHA is a little bit behind in San Mateo County pandemic framework. And so everyone's in alignment right now, which is very happy. That's been obstacles for us when CDC produces news reports or what have you, or guideline changes in San Mateo County health pandemic. I think it gives some mixed messages. But as an employer, we do follow Cal OSHA. So now everyone is up to speed and we're all on the same page, which is wonderful. And so when it comes to fully vaccinated employees who've had a COVID-19 exposure, who are asymptomatic, they do not need to quarantine. So that's new information for you, for Cal OSHA's purpose. Next slide, please. So student testing, as we progress, I can't believe the end of the school year is right around the corner. We have various options, including our school sites, various school sites that are offering student testing. And as a reminder, these community resources. So it's really a collective effort to offer families a choice to test. And so we, I wanted to make sure that this was provided. It's also on our website. Jorge and Don has done an excellent job communicating the opportunities for families. So once again, it's no cost, confidential, safe, easy, et cetera. So that information can be found on our website for students specifically.
So let's, now we're going to start with the continuation of our anticipation. And we're all ready to start the 2021, 22 school year in person. So we continue to plan. Just had another meeting with the principals today. Remember, it's going to be a full, there are going to be full days. We're going to be going to school five days per week. And that is from preschool through eighth grade. At this time, and as of yesterday, with the meeting that all the county district superintendents had with Superintendent McGee from the County Office of Education. Right now, this is as of yesterday, it's still three feet, classroom distancing is still going to be in effect. And that's what we're planning on. Now, as I said at the last board meeting, we don't know what's going to happen June 15th. That's when California opens up. And as we spoke yesterday, everything could change. We're going to also, as we talked today, utilize our, our outdoor space as much as we can for instruction. They do have their, their lunch shelters. And then we talked a bit about the tent situation. And I really need to get more information if we're going to use any tents outdoors with our children, what the CEQA regulations would be. But principals who are interested in going in that direction do actually have that opportunity to utilize outdoor space for instruction if they so desire to do so. And their teachers also want to get out there and do instruction outside. But the piece about the tent is where I need to get further clarification from Don Diaz. And then he will ensure, ensure me that we have to do A, B, and C before we put up a tent, I'm sure, regarding CEQA. The regulations coming from the State Department of Education. Next slide. So as of yesterday, masks will be required indoors, including vaccinated individuals. At least initially, masks required outdoors until vaccinations are available. And we're talking about the little guys that, you know, that vaccine may not be ready until early fall for those preschool kids and TK kids and Kinder on up. So like I said, when we spoke at, when we're given information of superintendent's meeting yesterday by Nancy McGee and her meeting with the other county health departments within the Bay Area counties, right now, that's what it looks like. Again, it could be a game changer, June 15th. No temperature checking will need to continue. However, some form of health screening may be required. Next slide. So we will need to continue with the hand hygiene and daily classroom and bathroom cleaning. Each of our school sites is going to maintain their campus supervisor. They had one this school year. They're going to have one again the next school year. Each school will maintain the day custodian for additional cleaning, which they had this school year. They'll have it again next year. We're hoping to have health clerks at each of our school sites, one at each of our school sites next year. We are still going to talk about that with CSCA to approve the job, the job description that has been created to move forward with that. Air purifiers are still in each of our classrooms and they will be utilized. Next slide. MERV 13 filters will be replaced often at our school sites. We will continue to ask our students and our staff to stay home when they are sick. We will continue with contact tracing and isolation that will most likely continue. We are working on details around lunchtime. We talked about this at the principals' meeting today and the superintendents, we talked a lot about it yesterday. Having that six-foot distance inside a multi-use room cafeteria, whatever you want to name it, is going to be difficult, especially if you have like 600, 700 kids on campus. How many times are you going to have to have lunch operation activities take place? So this is something that we asked Superintendent McGee in speaking with the other county health officials and also with the California Department of Public Health, that they really look at this carefully and bring us hopefully back to either three or maybe like one foot between each child. Because six feet between each child when they're eating without their mask is going to be difficult. We can do it, but there'll be many, at some of our large sites, there'll be many different types of, there'll be several types of lunch schedules that'll have to occur. Now at, you can use the outsides areas when it's nice and it's warm. That's great in springtime. But if we go down the avenues of But if we go down the avenues of previous falls where there have been the fires that have occurred and the smoke going outside during that time is not advantageous. So we're really hoping that when it comes to lunchtime at our school sites, that the California Department of Public Health will really give us guidance that we can work with. We're hoping also that cohorts may be able to mix during recess. And, and that's another thing that we definitely pushed forward in articulating that piece. Also Superintendent McGee, when she meets with CDPH along with the other county superintendents of education in the Bay Area. Any questions on this? This is where you can see our little hiccups could occur, but I'm giving my fingers cross that June 15th. Thing really going to change. Next slide.
So actually, I did have a question. So on the cohort, so the current guidance is the groups need to stay in a cohort, right? Which I know is complicated for middle school.
Correct.
So in terms of our scheduling, are we sort of a little bit of a wait and see and hoping that it's going to open up and we'll be able to operate a more regular middle school? Or are you, you know, June 15th will be here pretty soon, so maybe we'll get more clarity June 15th. But I was just curious about that component if you've had, I mean, I know you've had conversations, but what are you thinking?
I have asked the principals to plan as it would be at normal school.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we're all hopeful for that.
Yeah. It looks like it's going in that direction, especially now that students 12 years old and above have been able to, will be able to be vaccinated. So I asked them to plan for a normal, normal classroom setting. And in middle school, the normal classroom setting would be you have different students mixing and changing classrooms.
Okay. And then I did see a question in the chat, and I know it comes up quite a bit about vac- vaccinations. Will they be required? And what we've said before, just for the audience, is that first of all, the vaccinations would need to be approved under the regular process. Right now, they're under emergency approvals. So they first have to be regular approvals. And then the California Department of Health would actually need to approve it for California. And then it would need to go to the state legislature where they would need to approve that it's a required vaccine. And then it would be included with other vaccines that are required for those coming to the school site. So that's sort of a long way of saying, we're not there yet, but we could be at some point.
Correct.
Right?
Very good, Elise.
Well, I've gotten that question almost more than anything, right? Because vaccines are on everybody's mind, so, okay. Yeah, you're very welcome for the idea, thank you there. Okay, did board members have any other questions or comments on what we've seen tonight?
No, there's, I still have some more, and I've got going on.
Oh, okay, you asked if there are any questions, sorry.
Because that's like, depending on what happens. So here we go. We, we, you know, we have additional dollars, and we've been talking something about these additional dollars each board meeting. So remember that we have dollars in place for summer school for summer 2021, for summer school for 2022, and summer school for 2023. So those dollars are already in place, utilizing the funds from the federal government for this school year's summer and the next two. So that's great, they're, they're there, they're ready to move. We are in the process of, of looking for two advanced math teachers to work at our K-8 sites, which have have a high number of Title I students. So those will be at Hoover, Garfield, Roosevelt for those schools. We're also looking at two community school coordinators for, one for Roosevelt, because Roosevelt is going to become a community school with, in regard to the needs of that school site. And we have a halftime for Adelante and a halftime for MIT out of these funds. I had a meeting with Kathy Kwan yesterday, and the meeting went really, really well. So these two half-time coordinators to become full-time. So that's just a, and then the board, you, you all know Kathy Kwan and how wonderful she's been since I've been the superintendent. And we had a great meeting, we had a great meeting. So I can probably bump that up to full-time through to those schools. I want to talk to the principals first to make sure that's going to work and also talk to Michelle. And then we have three elective teachers, which are also going to be utilized at our K-8 schools that have a high number of Title I students. Remember, our Title I students are students for free lunch. Our Title I students are also our English language learners, our foster youth, our homeless youth. And so we are making sure that they also will have that opportunity to have those elected. Community school funding, we in the past have always asked the school sites to put X amount of dollars, those that have community schools, into funding a portion of the community school coordinator. We are going to take, we're not going to ask them to do that. We are going to pick up that cost, and they will not have to use any of their discretionary funds to do so. Next slide. Every year, we have to replace devices for our students, Chromebooks, sometimes even for our staff. So here is a 5% to replace devices that we're going to utilize dollars for, to replace any devices that need to be replaced for the next school year. Kyle gave us the 5% mark, which he said is good for our district so that we can move forward to give students, if a device is broken, if a device is not working for whatever reason, it will be there, a replacement will be already here at the district office for them. There is also the Orion and Henry Ford, their MTSS TOSA was 50%. It is, they're each going to have a one FTE. The additional 50% is being picked up by the federal money. I read assessments and lessons are also being purchased with the federal funds. PE Plus and Mike, Cecilia really knows, but Mike being new to the board, we contract with PE Plus, which is the organization from the PCC group that has an entity called PE Plus. They provide PE for our kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade students at the majority of our school sites. The district picks up a portion of the cost, and each site puts in X amount of dollars that utilizes them. The other thing that the district does is we pay for each of their personnel, not for each, for one of their personnel that is working at school sites to be a substitute teacher. They go through the process, they get the certificate from the County Office of Education, and then we pay them a $500 stipend. That allows our teachers who are in those primary grades to have prep time. They don't have to be out there in the yard with them, because they're not credential teachers. They are young students who have just graduated from college, some are still in college. But this gives them the opportunity, our teachers, to have prep time and also gives the opportunity for these young professionals who are working with our students to give them PE activities, health nutrition activities, and also provides them with different types of activities during recess and lunch recess time. The reason why I say district funding, we normally have, we normally, our contribution is $90,000. I found out that our contribution, our contribution for the next school year will be $315,000 because Sequoia Healthcare District is not picking that up anymore. They're picking up a major portion, but they're not picking up $315,000 of it. So I am using that one-time dollars to keep this program running next year. The year after, we're going to have to see what we're going to do. And I'll need to have a conversation with the Sequoia Healthcare District. Any questions on that? It's a biggie, 350K, I just, ah, but it's, it's, it's a program that is well-received at the school sites. The teachers really feel it's a benefit to the children and to also themselves to have prep time. They're grade-level partners. And it also provides for planned activities during lunch recess and recess time, which is great. Questions on that one? The next item is definitely we're purchasing computers for our new staff that are coming on board. We just purchased a lot of computers, but as Kyle reminds me, new staff come on board. And even if they're contracted that we've contracted with, we also have to get them one, a laptop. So we're purchasing computers for new staff. One Life Counseling, we had some additional expenses this year in One Life Counseling due to code, due to the instruction that was done virtually and counseling needs that children had. So the cost came up. So we're using the one-time dollars to cover those costs. And then curative services for our students. I still have an invoice for $258,000, which I don't think CZI is going to give me. So they, if I'm, I even having, I'm just, I've even asked just for a portion, but I didn't ask for the whole. I said, I'd like the whole thing, but if you give me a portion, I'll be happy with a portion. And so right now, that invoice will be paid within the next couple of weeks of 258,000. And that's where it will come from, these dollars, these dollars to begin with. Student learning applications. Liz and her staff development people, along with Kyle, worked closely with site administrators, with teachers in the classroom to understand what site licenses and softwares want for the next school year. Actually, it's for the next couple of years, correct, Liz, if I'm not mistaken? For the next couple of years. And so we have put, I think, like $600,000 into this expense coming out of the federal dollars. And this was a real group effort by the principals, the teachers, the tech department, and also our two teachers on special assignment in the area of technology, Bronya Webb and Kathy James, who did a fantastic job of compiling all this information and then making sure that we were getting the best applications and licenses for our, for our students, district-wide. Now, independent study will be in process next year. We were not having a virtual academy in Redwood City. Independent study will look a bit differently, but there's a survey that we're going to be sending out on Friday to parents in our community, Redwood City School District community, indicating to us if they are going to participate in independent study. There are virtual options that several of our neighboring community school, neighboring school districts are giving parents information about. They would, how I understood it yesterday is you would need to disenroll from the district that you're in and enroll in these virtual programs that are private programs. And then when you would come back to the school district, any school, of course, if it was Redwood City School District, we'd welcome you back. But if for any reason you're not coming back to the Redwood City School District for in-person learning, there are some virtual options available for parents that are private entities that the state sponsors. And we'll have that information for parents also. But we are definitely going in the direction of independent study for the next year. Questions, discussion?
Do board have any questions, comments?
I know you've been hearing about a lot of money that's coming from the state level, but what I heard yesterday, and that's being basic aid, I just go, oh, gosh. Elise, I think you heard it, you're the one that warned me before I went to the meeting. So I asked, and it's exactly what you said. You know, that I know CSBA along with AXA is saying the dollars should be for all students within California, whether you're basic aid or not basic aid. So let's see what happens. I know the legislature is negotiating now with the governor to see exactly what that's going to look like.
Mike, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of things. And yeah, I mean, things are changing so much that it's hard to know, right? Yeah, I know, you were saying that earlier. So on that PE Plus, I mean, I totally support like continuing that program next year. It's the value that it provides is probably even more than what, you know, the increased costs. But thanks for covering that part for us, so I'm glad that we'll do that again. On the, I, the, I, I know it all might change on the 15th, but just when we're, you're talking about what, there still might be an isolation factor or quarantining factor, and I just wasn't sure. With not offering a virtual option, I mean, how, well, do you know what that would look like? If a class has to quarantine or if, if siblings in a class have to quarantine or anything like that?
It's a really good question. We talked about that at great length yesterday. We were told that you should be able to pivot back into something virtually for at least 10 days while the class is quarantined. And we do have that in place. That's one thing we have in place now that we can do. It's not like before when we're scurrying around and trying to learn. Our teachers have done an amazing job of learning these platforms and moving forward with it. But the quarantine, remember, is only for 10 school days, so it's, you know, two weeks. And, but we were told be able to pivot, and we can pivot. That's one thing we can, I can assure you, we can do really well. Because the principals, the teachers, classified members, everybody knows what to do now if we have to go in that direction.
And then the last thing was on that, that curative invoice. Family insurance isn't covering it. I, I know we've talked about this before, but yeah.
No, but we, we got the, we got the, the list, and I guess the family, the doctors are, it's not the doctors. It's the HMO, the PPO, or whatever is not covering it for children. You know, it's, it's really annoying. And I talked to one of the reps the other day, and I said, this is just unfair. And he says, well, we did our due diligence. And I said, wasn't there COVID dollars from the state that was going to pick this up also? And he wouldn't respond, he didn't know really what I was talking about. But I had read that there were COVID dollars that the state received, and those dollars could be used for districts like ours who have family who, you know, it wasn't covered. And he didn't know what I was talking about. So I have a, a meeting with Superintendent McGee on Friday to see what she can find out for me and see if she could also provide a bit of assistance that she has with some COVID dollars she, she does have last year.
Thanks for the update and, you know, and where some, you know, sharing with us where some of the federal dollars are being planned for over the summer and next year. That was good to hear.
Yeah, you know, as a follow-up to that, Dr. Baker, let us know after you talk to Superintendent McGee if there's any advocacy that needs to happen. Because it does seem kind of odd that there's all these state sites that where it's free. I mean, I went to them a number of times, right? And I was, you know, anyway, so I don't really understand why that's not working in this case. So that, I appreciate you following that.
And then, and the other piece is all our kids have insurance, whether it's Medi-Cal or whatever, they have it. So that's what I, that's what I asked. And he sounded like he didn't know what I was talking about, like, you don't know about Medi-Cal? Again, if you go this, you know, level of income, kids will be served, you know, in that form of insurance. Okay, so I, I'm going to talk to Nancy about it and see. Okay, so I, I'm going to talk to Nancy about it and see what we can do. How could she help us, help us also?
Any other questions?
I have one question. Thank you for the information, Dr. Baker. And my question is, I know we're not going to take temperatures anymore, but are we not having parents feel a lot of wellness warm? Is that what it's called before they come to school here?
It's, it's one of the items that we were going to do the screening. Yes, for parents to do that. And that's one of the questions on this, on the forum.
Okay, great, thanks. That, that was it.
So I did have a speaker card, but I haven't seen the individual in the audience. So I would just ask if Patricia Kimrazzi is in the audience and under a different name? If you could raise your hand in the participants or just put in the chat who you are and we can move you over. And her question was around the independent study. So I know you responded to that. So maybe she'll follow up either through her principal or directly to us. Or if anybody knows her in the audience and is here and wants to reach out to her to let her know what Dr. Baker said about the independent study, you're welcome to do that. Okay.
And Elisa, once we know people are not coming back due to what, their child's not vaccinated yet. Once we know the number, then we will have more of a sense what that independent study will look like.
That's great. I think that's helpful. Okay. And I, and I will say that, you know, we had a San Mateo County School Boards Association meeting on Monday with school board members from the county. And then I was also in a lot of conversations this weekend with board members from across the state through CSBA. And this is a question that every district is grappling with right now. Because as we know, the state legislature is not really giving us approval for a full-blown kind of virtual academy like we've been doing. And so they're saying this, you know, at this point, we need to use the independent study. But I think there's a lot of questions as to what that means, right? So just know that we're right in the thick of it, along with all the other school districts, trying to figure out what it means and what's best for our own community as well. So anyway, thank you for working on it. Okay, so I do want to say that it is 9:13. So I'd like to take a five-minute break and then we'll come back to finish off the agenda. All right, so we'll be back at 9:28. Actually, we'll just say nine. Is that right? No, that's five minutes. Gosh, how about 9:20? We'll be back at 9:20, please. Sorry, my math is not good after an IPM evidently. Be at 9:20. Okay, it is 9:20, so we'll start things back up. So we're on to, we have a number of first readings for board policies. Our board policy committee has been very busy last month. We have more to come, in fact. We met just yesterday. All right, so 13.2, comprehensive and targeted, targeted school improvement.
Yes, thank you so much to Elisa McAvoy and Janet Lawson for all the hard work for this committee. I did want to, we have a variety, several to bring to you tonight for review and a couple of ARs just for information. I do want the, just to remind everybody that the board policy discussion originates from an updated version from CSBA or a new policy that has come to be. But we start with CSBA and review it and then analyze what the changes are if it's an update. And so that happens in every single, every single board policy and AR that we review. The ARs support the board policies and give district staff direction and how to manage and work through different processes when it comes to the board policies. So I just wanted to point that out. I did have a question from a board member about that. So just, just one reminder. So as we go along here and we see changes, we will, and now the board memo, it does say whether it's a new policy or an updated policy, you'll notice that the items that are changed will be in bold. So the first item that we will be looking at, which is a board policy on comprehensive and targeted support and improvement. I'd like to point out first that our district has not been identified in needing any kind of targeted support or improvement. However, it is important that we do have a, a plan in place through board policy to address different steps that we would need to take should that ever happen in the future. So that's what this policy specifically does. It is a new policy and that states that in the, in the board, in the board memo regarding this particular one. And you can differentiate and see that as we progress forward through these next policies. So are there any, I know that the board has done a great job reading all of these very thoroughly in advance. And I have had various questions asked over the last few days. And so I'll be addressing them as we go along too, so that we have a full discussion. Are there any questions about this particular one?
Okay, and these are just.
I want to ask one quick clarifying one, Wendy, and you were, you started to address it there. But so for the new policies, we just take the CSBA one. You obviously review it, but there, there haven't been any changes to the CSBA one for the, just for the new policies. So like, this is a new one, this is the CSP link. Okay, great. That, that's, that's what I wanted to just double check. Okay.
And that is a good point, actually. We do look at each of the policies. I send them to the directors affected to ask for their input or thoughts or changes. And then as needed, we send it to our attorney as well to double check on certain things. So that's the process we take. Thank you for the question.
And I, I should say, go ahead, Janet.
Well, as a policy.
We're probably going to say the same thing to you.
When we're discussing the new ones, if there, if there's any, I think, big changes to it, we would make, we would show that in the strike through or the bold. One thing that we do as a committee is go through and make sure that pronouns are changed from he, she to they. And those are just, you know, changes that we put in there. Elisa, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. There, there may be some minor edits that we make to the new policies that you wouldn't see because we don't think they're controversial. They just basically are maybe a little more poignant or unique to our district. But we actually try to keep to the CSBA template as much as possible. Unless for some reason, one of our staff or our attorneys say, you know, we recommend something slightly different. But as Janet said, if there was anything major, we would make sure that you know that we're deviating off the CSBA template. Yeah, for the new. And then if it's our current policy, then you absolutely see the strike through in the bold. Yeah. Okay, so I know it's getting late, so we probably want to keep moving. So these are, as, as you know, their discussion, the official language is it's sort of a first reading. So it's also an opportunity for the public to provide comments. I don't see any comments from the public, but sometimes we do. Sometimes there's policies where, you know, either staff or the public do have comments that they want to make sure we hear before we approve them. And our second reading is usually what we do. Okay, so anything more on 13.2? All right, 13.3, which is on transfer of funds.
Yeah, so this is a new policy that was reviewed by our CBO and, and of course, the committee. And so this one essentially allows flexibility to tran, temporarily transfer funds if need be in, in a time period. And, and, and manage funds accordingly. It also allows to defer payments owed to districts and manage that money accordingly. So this is brand new to us, but was blessed by Priscilla. Thank you, Priscilla, for your time. Any questions on this particular one?
Muted, all right. So we're on to 13.4, student activity funds.
Okay, the student activity funds, we actually have this in place. So this is an updated board policy. And really, there's information on fundraising and how their, how student involvement occurs regarding these funds. So some of you may be familiar with student council and their fundraising efforts. And then there is an account in which that money is, is collected and then also dispersed. And so there's policies in place. And we've been actually doing this for a few years. And so I was pleased to know that we do have this, this already in place. And so students actually give input about how that money is funded. And then there's also oversight processes that have been in place. And that is also part of this updated policy. Any questions about this particular item?
Fine, I asked this poorly in email, Wendy, so I apologize. But what I was asking was that the proposed language in there, that there's proposed language that says the board may approve the formation of associated student body organizations, et cetera. That's new now. But there's another policy around the formation of organizations. And so I wasn't sure, that actually puts it into the principals and says the principals approve it. And I wasn't sure how those two, are we changing the, are we changing the approval of the organizations here? Did I misread the, the changes in this one? That, that's what I was trying to get at, like, how, how do those two policies work together?
So, so at each school site that has a student council and these various organizations, they're, they're overseen by usually a teacher. And then, of course, the principal is involved as well. And so these systems are set up, and it's not necessarily student council, but any really fundraising organization, there is oversight by that principal. And so the formation of a student council is authorized by a principal and the school site. So that was my, my read on that. Priscilla, did you have another or more information about that particular process as a result to funds?
No, the, the way that it works is just exactly how you described them. But there are certain activities that has to be approved by the board. So, so there's some restrictions on the fundraising activities that they can do. And then in terms of accounting, we already have the internal controls in place. We have the oversight from the business office. We have been reviewing them and doing the reconciliation. So all of those processes and procedures are already in place right now.
So would one example for, be for example, you know, selling of candy bars to fundraise for the Washington DC trip, at least a few years back, that was very popular. But then again, now we have a health board policy that says we can't be doing that. So this is how the board does give input on appropriate fundraising effort in this one example. Any other questions or comments?
Dr. Baker, are you, were you talking to us?
There was also, there was another, there's another example, sorry, the mute. Wasn't it North Star that you had the eighth graders, that some eighth graders were going to Europe? Do you remember that? Was it at North Star? And that's something that would come back to the board to be approved. That's an item that would come back to you guys to be approved.
Or even really Yosemite trips and Yosemite trips.
And all that, because all that money that's being collected for that. What doesn't come to you is outdoor ed, because we do fundraising every year for outdoor ed. But your Yosemite trips, the trips that they're going to Europe or whatever, those will come to you. So that's an occasion when you would, as board members, approve that. I know the wording does sound a little funky on here, but I know that, that's.
So it sounds like what you're saying is the intent of this policy is the board approves the fundraising, right? I guess that was the, is that, is that what you're trying to say? As opposed to necessarily the formation of the.
Right, it's not really the formation. You don't really approve the formation, not unless, and I don't know when there would ever be a time that you would approve the formation of a student body that, that's being elected at a school site. So, so that's, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. I understand where you're coming from with this because of this language. Because that's what it seems to indicate. The formation of associated student body organizations. Not unless, or what about, like, maybe, maybe, Lisa, what about the high school? Because you've been very involved with the Sequoia High School, the Ed Foundation, the foundation for the, have.
Yeah, well, well, I'm also just reading it. I mean, it does say to that end, the board may approve the formation of associated student body organizations. It doesn't say we have to. So, well, what we could do is, you know, we're happy to take it back before it comes back for the final reading. We can, Janet, Wendy and I can take another look at it and see if there's any word smithing. I think this is the words from CSBA, right? If I'm not mistaken, this is their new language. So we may have to do a little digging to find out why.
Okay.
Mike, is there anything specific? Is it more just that you want to make sure we're actually, we have a, you know, the policy reflects what we're doing?
Yeah, I just, I was just had a question. It seemed that it was like, it's, this is about fun, fun, you know, student activity funds. And here it's saying that now the board's going to approve. And we have this other policy about, so I just didn't know how they work together. There, there's, you know, there's 6145.5 that is around student organizations and equal access. And that one specifically talks about, you know, it's, the principals have the, I, I just was trying to understand how they work together.
Yeah.
Okay, and sometimes it does get confusing with the high school. John, you're right. So we can, okay, go ahead, Wendy, you were going to say something.
Yeah, and we can definitely take it back. And that's what's great about these sessions is we can take notes and bring it back. But the way I read it originally was that the board authorizes there to be student organizations that actually manage money and with oversight, of course. But, and especially, and I know we have younger grades, but we also, you know, we have student council, student governments, middle school that are actually making these great decisions. So it's a learning lesson for them. So it's the ability for students to interact with money that will be deposited in, in school funds. But we can take it back and, and take another look at it. And if we're questioning it, we need it to be more clear. So I think that that's great. I'll do that for June 16th.
Okay.
Okay.
So, thank you for that feedback. So we're on to 13.5, which is parcel taxes.
Parcel taxes, okay. So much fun doing these all electronically and pulling up every document here. Okay, so here we go with parcel taxes. So in regards to parcel taxes, I did get clarification from our attorney. Mike asked a great question. This, um, this, this board policy, which is new, addresses what happens when we have a parcel tax and so forth. And there was a question about with, with new regulations that came out when we abide by the two-thirds vote or the, the super majority or a simple majority, which is 51%. So I got clarification on that. So when a local agency, which is what the district would be, for example, if the district determined that a district, the district drove a parcel tax, they would, we would still need to have a two-thirds vote. And that's under government code 50077. However, that's different than a voter-driven initiative. And then that can revert to the simple majority of 51%. So there's clarification on that. So for us, it's still the super majority, which is two-thirds. So anyway, this parcel tax board policy does address how, you know, that we can't use district funds and services, which we've been putting in practice anyway. But it's good to have this as a board policy in place and writing. Are there any questions on this one?
And what we noticed with this one is that this is in line with what we've been doing already. It's interesting, we've done a number of parcel taxes, but we never had a policy. So now we have a policy. Or we will have a policy.
Commented in our policy committee meeting, it's basically saying this is the law and we follow the law.
Yeah, it was nice clarification. Great.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so we are on to 13.6, which is non-discrimination harassment.
Yeah, so actually you've seen this board policy multiple times, actually, over the last couple of years. Dr. Montes brought this up during our federal program monitoring review. And so this is another update. And really, this one addressed. And really, this one addresses prohibiting discrimination against medical conditions. Also reflects the new laws that have been put in place. And so, especially around student records and gender, of course. So I have a feeling we'll be seeing this come back to us as we progress over the years or even multiple times in a year. Because updates are happening quite frequently. Later on in the board meeting, we'll be discussing actually ARs surrounding this particular policy. Any questions about it? I know it's familiar to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thirteen point seven, comprehensive health education.
Yes. So this board policy is an update. And actually, I think it's perfect timing because it does address health education, which includes really social, emotional, aside from health education that's that's needed in our curriculum. And to update these new or updated content standards on injury prevention and safety for students and how to be a healthy person within the community. And then there's various topics outlined in the board policy and the board memo. Specifically, the specific topics about how students would also be excused if their parents did not want various topics to be discussed. So this is a perfect update at this time of year as we're planning ahead with curriculum. Any questions?
Okay, any comments, questions? All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, we're on to consent items. And there's just the one, which is adoption of district mission, vision and values. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Janet, and I'll go with Priscilla. I think she was also trying to say second. All right, roll call vote, please.
Prissy Wells.
Hi.
Prissy Lawson.
Hi.
Prissy Marcus. Vice President Deasilka.
Hi.
President Maviva.
Hi. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Dr. Linda Montez for all of your leadership, getting us through this process. And all your work on equity the last couple of years. Really appreciate it. And, you know, we talked about what a legacy you're leaving us in so many ways, but this is, this is one huge mark. It will be there right on the front of our website, right? So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And Dr. Baker, thank you for your leadership on this as well.
It's on our station.
And thank you to the whole team. All right. Okay, so action items, we already covered fifteen point one, so we have fifteen point two. All right. And I do have one speaker card. I just want to say that because it's getting late and I might forget to call on the person. So you can all help me remember. And Dr. Baker or?
All right, this is Wolf, and she will lead us through the expanded learning opportunities grant plan.
Yes.
Twenty two.
Yes, actually, my cat and I will, you all know how he loves board meetings. So I'm happy to share my screen, Kyle, if that's easier. Do you want me to go ahead and do that? Or would you like to advance my slides? Oh, you already got it. Thank you. Thank you. I just want to start though, because I want to also add my congratulations to the new teachers as well as to the retiring teachers. Several of those names are people who I started with and grew up with the past thirty year, over thirty five years ago. But I especially want to honor Linda Montez. And I know this isn't the last time that we'll have the chance to say something about her. But as Alyssa just said, Linda, you, the legacy that you leave is will last forever. And when I think back twenty five years ago, when you and I had a dream and we started a school and the legacy that that school also provides, and I just want to leave this conversation with a quote from Margaret Mead about never doubt that a small group of committed citizens can change the world because in reality, they're the only ones that ever have. And you have changed our world here, Linda. And I really want to thank you for all that you've done. And I know you will never be too far away. And so thank goodness for that.
And there's a story here. And Linda knows it well. And Jesse, he's gone. I sexy if Jesse was still listening, but he's gone. I remember when I first met Linda and Jesse and Liz was working as a director of EL Services.
Bilingual education.
Bilingual education. And I was Principal Hoover. And she calls me up and then she comes over to see me and says, you need to hire Jesse Silverman. I go, what? Yeah, I do need that fourth grade bilingual teacher. You need to hire him. If you don't hire him, she doesn't come. So. And it was the best thing. Jesse, Jesse was wonderful. He was fantastic. So I'm glad that you made me hire Jesse and glad that you brought Linda. So thank you, Linda, for everything. I still remember that day when Liz walked in and said, you need to hire him. And I'm going, what?
So I think what you're saying is I get all the credit for everything that Linda has done, right?
No.
Oh, no. Oh, yeah.
She came, I had to go. I had to go get her from Chico, remember that?
Have to bring her back?
Yeah, I bring back.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'll let you go.
All right. So we'll have more opportunities to talk about Linda. So this is our expanded learning opportunities grant, and this is the one of the many plans that is going to be coming before the board about how we're spending state funding. This is funding that is part of the in-person learning opportunities. And this was a grant that became available if we offer those in-person learning opportunities, which we have done. And the, this grant needs to come to you for approval before the end of May and sent into the county office of education. So thank you for seeing it tonight. Oh, Kyle, can you advance the slide? So this is what it looks like blank. So we can go ahead. Because you have the copy of it filled out. So this is information that was shared at our, our last LCAP stakeholder engagement meeting that also served as an opportunity for input into the extended learning opportunities grant, which I'll now just call the ELO grant. And so we had the opportunity to have Evelyn Campos, who works in our Yale department, translate these slides for us. And so we have the good fortune of having them available in English and in Spanish. But what is attached to this slide is the actual, is information from SESSA, which is the State Superintendent Association that provides a lot of guidance on the laws that come out that impact our funding and our decision making. And so this gives kind of a summary of the guidance of how this money was to be spent. There were some very specific items that needed to be addressed in this funding. And some of these are items that Dr. Baker has already shown you that we are paying for. Some of that is coming from federal funding, but some of that is also coming from the state grant. So overall, it's six point six billion for California schools. Of course, for us, it was closer to four million. It wasn't six point six billion, but it is the in-person instruction. And so we needed to, in order to apply for this grant and to write this application, we needed to implement a learning recovery program. This is, you know, the concern that students did not thrive over this past year in terms of their learning. And so what, what are our actions and services that we will be providing for our students as we identify where some learning loss may have taken place? In order to help them recoup some of those losses, both academic as well as focus on social, emotional. And so there is an emphasis on providing supplemental instruction. And so we'll take a look at that in a second. And then really targeting where possible, the students who have the greatest needs. And so Dr. Baker's already talked about that in terms of our, our Title One schools, but we're also taking a look at our, our I ready scores and we're identifying where the students are who seem to be a little bit more behind in terms of their language arts and math growth for the school year. Next slide. So there are a number of categories that we can use to identify actions and services for our students. One is to extend learning time. And so what you'll see in a couple of slides from now is what items fall into each one of these categories within this grant. But these are the general categories. So we can add more time, which includes summer school. We can do our best to accelerate progress, to close the learning gaps. And so we'll talk about some ideas that we have for that. Providing integrated student supports to address any barriers that we may find to learning. We can provide community learning hubs similar to the ones that we have been providing. This is an item that we have decided not to continue with because our students will be back in person. But if that were not the case, then this would be an acceptable use of those funds going forward. Next slide. Another item that doesn't pertain to us, but would pertain more to high school would be if we had credit deficient students providing additional supports for them for credit recovery. But again, that, that's a high school issue, not ours. At any additional academic services, and we'll take a look at what some of those ideas were, as well as training for school staff on strategies. And so we have put some of our professional development that is coming up in August in this category as well. Okay, next slide. So again, just in thinking about what does it mean to recover? We're, we are trying not to use that word a lot, but that is what is in this particular grant. And so it's called out. But basically, what it's looking at are areas of academics, it's social, emotional supports, student engagement. And when we talk about some of the additional electives that we want to offer, we're thinking of those in the area of engagement and enrichment as well. Look at making sure that we're being culturally sensitive and culturally appropriate as we design these activities as well as an eye to the health and safety of the students always at all times. Next slide. So these are the actual items that are in the ELO. So for extended learning time, as you know, we are offering a science investigation summer program. It will be offered at three schools. And right now we have close to, I believe, four hundred and fifty children signed up for that. And so we're very, very much looking forward to this. So it'll be taking place the last two weeks of June and the first two weeks of July. And as I said, it is a science investigation summer program that will have reading and writing, but it will be under the auspices of, you know, a very enriching summer school science focus. We are also looking at extending learning time when the students come back to school in the fall by providing tutoring. And we don't have the details of this worked out, but one of the pieces of research that has been very instrumental in making this decision has been research from Linda Darling Hammond and talking about the impact that tutoring has with students who have a highly qualified tutor who is working with them two to three times a week in, in small groups. It doesn't have to be one-on-one tutoring. And so we are thinking of working with our retired teachers, many of the names who you just saw earlier this evening, we'll be reaching out to them to see if any of them are interested in, of course, they can't do this for six months, so we'll give them a little bit of time. But we'll, we'll bring them back to work with students who in an after school program in the areas of language arts and math as identified by our assessments, our formative assessments and our diagnostic assessments that can give us specific areas of need for these students. So those are two ways that we're extending learning time. Next slide. To accelerate progress, one of the ideas is to lower class size for grades K through two to no more than twenty five students. And as you heard Dr. Baker say earlier, this is something that we plan to do, not just for one year, but to use additional federal funding to be able to do, to run this program for three years. One of the requirements in this grant is to hire instructional assistants to hire classified staff. And so we have met with classified staff and we have met with the school administrators to determine what is the best way to provide the support. And we have, through discussion, and there wasn't a lot of agreement on this, but we made the decision to hire full-time bilingual instructional assistants to work with teachers to provide that supplemental instruction. And this was based on the requests from the schools and the, particularly the schools that have the students with the greatest needs, that they've asked for full-time assistance to work in the classrooms with a teacher in a push-in model to support small group instruction in the areas of reading and math. And it will depend on the grade levels where they see that they have the greater needs. And then very likely that person will have different grade levels throughout the day. It'll be a six hour position. We will also be providing training for these assistants. And we are also providing reading and literacy teachers who will work with students and teachers in grades K through two and grades three through eight across the district. It's a program model that's been very successful in our primary grades. And so we are wanting to extend that to our middle and upper elementary grades, because there are children who we have identified who are in these grades who are not proficient readers. And the teachers haven't always been best prepared to teach reading skills. They've, they're more teachers of reading to learn rather than learning to read. And so that we would provide some support for them in this literacy teacher who could work with children, but who would also work with the teachers and providing them with some ideas for strategies. Next slide. We are also assigning full-time teachers on special assignment to, and these are at Hoover, Taft, Garfield and Roosevelt to oversee the implementation of a multi-tiered system of support. There's a couple of slides about that coming up in just a minute. But these are teachers who will be looking at data on a regular basis and working with the staffs to identify what levels of support that the students need within this tiered system. That ensuring that students are receiving the immediate supports that they need and that, that, that they are assessing to ensure that these supports are actually resulting in the improvement that they want to see. Or if, if not, then those would not necessarily be the best interventions for those students. And so there's an ongoing monitoring of student progress and the alignment of the progress with the supports that best meet the students' needs. And having somebody on staff to support that work is essential. So you've heard Dr. Baker say earlier that there's other funding that is being used to provide another halftime person at Orion and Henry Ford to make those full-time toses as well. That's just not, doesn't happen to be coming out of this particular funding source, which is why it's not listed here. And this funding source is also providing that professional development, and that will be for both certificated and classified staff in the areas of acceleration as well as trauma informed practices. And we are bringing staff in the certificated staff for three mornings in August before school starts from eight until two thirty. I'm sorry, eight until twelve thirty. And then we will be working with the certificated staff when they are, the classified staff, when they have returned as well, to provide the professional development for them. Next slide. And in order to also provide these academic services, we need to ensure that we have the diagnostic assessment. And so this is the I ready assessment is coming out of this fund for one year that we're using, as you know, for our formative and diagnostic assessment. And we're also looking into different ways to assess social and emotional health. And there are a couple of pilots of different products that we're using right now in some classrooms across the district. And we will be making a determination of what we might be able to use to better monitor student social and emotional health. And we will use some of this funding to provide the materials that will be used by those reading teachers, by those instructional assistants and by classroom and by classroom teachers for intervention and for some of that after-school tutoring. Next slide. It's thought, yeah, this is animated. So go ahead. Thank you. So this just gives a quick overview of the MTSS structure. And this was work that was begun in our district a couple of years ago. Sort of went on hold this past year because there was so much more conversation about safety and protocols and how to use the distance learning applications and all that. And so we want to get back to this systemic approach towards ensuring that all students are receiving the support that they need when they need it and that we are identifying if that support is actually making a difference and helping them achieve and to accelerate and to thrive. And so it's looking at that system of support using the data and that's where our TOSSes will be pivotal in that. And then ensuring that the teachers have and the instructional assistants have the training and the appropriate practices. Next slide. And so this is an impossible to read slide, but this is the, the information that comes from the State Department in their support of the MTSS framework. And this will be something that as we again relaunch this, again, this is work that was begun by, by Linda and what had gotten started with MTSS teams at the school sites a couple of years ago. And so there, there's a foundation that has been built. And so it's kind of rebooting this work and taking it forward. Again, thinking about how all of our, our funding sources and all of the actions and services that we're bringing together are articulated in a system of, of planning that is ensuring that students are receiving whatever supports they need as often as they need them in order to be successful. Next slide. And so this is some information that we used when we talked about the ELO grant and the LCAP and their connection together as well as sort of under the MTSS umbrella. When we met with the LCAP committee a couple of weeks ago is really looking at, this is a long-term investment that we're making. It isn't just a one year, we're going to throw some stuff out there, right? That this is really part of an articulated plan that will take time to actually get it going again. And to ensure that there is a good understanding and a stick-wittedness so that it's not a sense of this is, here's something new that's coming that we're bringing it back and we're staying with it through full implementation and to sustainability in a system-wide approach towards improvement. Next slide. There's my cat. And so this is if you have any questions.
That's a nice bit of humor late at night. That's cute.
We're beyond like 11:30. So we're a lot earlier than I thought it would be.
All right. Any comments, questions? For Liz? I think it's Mike and I who are on the committee this year, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Elise, I just wanted to remind you, I think you said you had a public comment and you wanted us to remind you so you didn't forget. Yeah, okay.
And I forgot. So, and it's so funny. I was remembering just two slides ago and I was double checking that she was still in the audience. So thank you for that reminder. Maria Stockman, I believe you're still there. If Kyle, if we can move her over. All right, Maria, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. I'm wondering how many people are here that stay up this long for these meetings. I wanted to talk about specifically the portion of this money, which is already earmarked for instructional assistance, par educators, which is one-tenth, which is a close to a half a million dollars the district is getting. It is said that the districts are supposed to be working with their unions on how this is planned. So when we were brought together for a meeting that we thought we would be discussing and bringing ideas from our people who are paraprofessionals, some of them you praised tonight. Thank you. Retirees. We were told that the money was already planned on being spent a different way. And so our feeling walking away was why even come and give input to these meetings? When decisions are made already without our input. So what is planned for the instructional assistants is to hire one per site. And six hours is not full-time. That's unfortunately, a lot of your retirees, bless their hearts, work for the district because they love them because they maxed at six hours instead of full-time seven and a half or seven hours to get medical from the district. And they retired without even getting that from the district. So these six-hour positions that they want to hire are not full-time. They will not be getting their full medical or any other benefits from the district. It's at dental paid by them. So we question about what would one instructional assistant do for six hours at a site every day? And if I look at, I have 15 lower-grade classrooms, I don't see how it'll be beneficial to spend too much time. So our suggestion that we brought to the board before because of the parents of the Redwood City School District requesting is to simply take that money and give your already existing trained, experienced instructional assistants, one extra hour. Some of them can come to school an hour before school starts. They can turn around and help with homework. It benefits the child because the child gets the additional tutoring with their math and other subjects and whatever the teacher identifies that the child needs before school. They socialize, they're social emotional. There are social emotional benefits there as well as feeding them, keeping them safe as the parents are requested. They go to school and after school, the other set of aides come in for one hour and help with homework, do the same thing, the tutoring of the kids. These people are already trained in the same things the teachers are. Why bring in other people and train them when we already have experienced, loving people that our children can learn from? Using retired teachers is a nice thought, but why spend the cost for one retired teacher when you can spend that on maybe three to four instructional assistants? Assisting them to get benefits in this district, an hour more of money to help them to live in this district and have three to one person working. It benefits the child, the teacher, the school district, the parents and our members that you praised for retiring and being so dedicated to this district. This is the only forum that we'll be able to have to bring this in.
Sorry, Maria, you're, you're over your three minutes. I'm sorry. I think. Yeah. And so I believe that, yeah, thank you for your comment. So I believe that Wendy Kelly wanted to respond and then maybe Liz can also respond from the LCAP committee. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And I look forward, we've had multiple meetings with CSCA regarding this topic and we'll continue again tomorrow afternoon. But I do want to clarify. You know, and Liz will speak about the specific needs of the request that's come in from our administrators about how to assist our students. And we, of course, would like to take their lead. But when it, when it comes to hours and benefits and so forth, we need to align the hard work that these instructional assistants will be doing to help mitigate this learning loss with the student instructional day. The students have really a six-hour instructional day. You know, and then there's recess and lunch and so forth. The teachers work a seven-hour day. And so the six-hour day really aligns well for instructional assistance support when you take out all the breaks and so forth for students. And so that's what we're trying to maximize. And very close to full health benefits in that regard. So we're really happy to be able to, actually, we're thrilled that this 10% paraprofessional assistance came from the state because we think that that will help the schools and the students and the teachers with the work that has to be done and some of this heavy lifting moving forward. The SB 86 does require consultation with CSCA. And so that has happened over multiple meetings in this last month as decisions are being formed and needs are being addressed. And so we can continue the conversation tomorrow. Maria, I look forward to that. I know you've met multiple times with Assistant Superintendent Liz Wolf and we're attendants in the LCAP committee. So that probably can really help form CSCA's understanding on what the needs are for our district and our kids. So thank you for the collaboration and contribution. Liz, did you want to mention?
Yeah, no, thanks, Wendy. I know. I think you said, the only thing I would just say is that in terms of what, how we see the intent of the grant is that it's in-person instruction and during the school day, right? And so I think as we talk to the principals about the support needed for the kids in order to remediate any learning loss. It was during the school day, what additional supports were needed. And so the idea was, you know, having assistants available to push in, to work with classroom teachers, to work with small groups during the school day during reading and math time, where frequently kids don't have access to an instructional assistant during the day. And if they're working in a classroom in a small group, often they're unattended because the teacher's working with another group. And so this gives another adult in the room at the same time who can really help support, answer questions and, you know, redirect a student if they're getting lost and, you know, help explain things. And so that's, that's where the interest was, was having an additional person in the room during reading and math time.
You know, I, I might just add from a board member's perspective and having been through a lot of these extra sort of grants and programs. And certainly this is not LCAP, but you know, it is kind of a similar process. I think that's an expectation that we go through with the district. And so I appreciate, you know, we definitely want to consult and we're required to consult with CSCA. And we actually always consult with CSCA through the LCAP process and other sorts of things. We have staff that are involved in those committees. But it's a consultation. So it's certainly one input that comes to the district in terms of how money is spent. And so we certainly appreciate Maria, everything that you've said and the CSCA contribution and consultation. But I think what you're hearing is at the end of the day, the district team has gotten input from a variety of stakeholders, right? So we've talked to principals and teachers and classified and parents and even students in this case. And so with all of that, and then with the guidance that's provided with the grant that we're given, a plan is put together. So I just think we need to be clear about sort of how the decisions are made. And I feel confident, having been in some of the meetings around this, that you've had a, you have a broad group of stakeholders that are providing input to make the best plan possible for the students, right? As the design of this money. So anyway, I know it can be a little confusing, you know, given all the different stakeholders that we have for this. So. All right, board members, any comments, questions that you have? All right. Well, great plan. Thank you so much.
Elise, you can really see how it aligns also with dollars that we're spending. And what I'm going to do is send you the last spreadsheet, right, Priscilla? I don't think we have to go this weekend. So you can see it all. It's this. And you can blow it up on your computer. You can look at it and you'll see how the dollars align for the next several years because without the dollars that we're receiving for the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant and without the dollars from the federal government, there is no way we could be able to do these things for over several year period of time. So I'm very happy about that, that we're here for the kids. This will make a difference for our students. And as we told our administrators, as we told our teachers, we want to make sure this money is going to work in the favor of our students. Our students who are English language learners, our students who are free and reduced lunch, our homeless and our foster youth. So I think with the dollars that and we have and how they're going to be spent over the next three years, it's a real shot in the arm for the Redwood City School District. I have never seen the amount of dollars like this in the 30-plus years I've been here come into a school district. I'm totally shocked, you know, and so you can see this spreadsheet, you can play with it, ask us, ask me any questions and I'll get back to you. But it is, it's here and it's all for kids, which is great, which is really great.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that because I think that's a good reminder that, that we've done a really good job as the district, you all, at the district staff, aligning all these various plans and monies that are coming in, right? So this is one piece of the overall project. And I will say, I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation. And what I'm finding is the amount of money that's coming in right now is actually full and fair funding. Like that is actually, that's the amount of funding we ought, we ought to be having. And then we'll be back up in the top 10, right? We're, I mean, probably we're not in the top 10 because everybody's getting this funding across the United States. But the whole point I'm making is that if this funding continued, that's the funding we've been talking about that we've needed, right? So it's actually just sort of the adequate funding that these kids deserve. But here we are.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
To make it happen.
I just wanted to add into that too, that it's, it is really exciting. And that the, the data pillar in MTSS that, you know, Liz said the TOSSes are funding is going to be great because that'll help sort of really show like what, what can be the impact of this kind of funding. And I really appreciate the way you all have been layering the different funding sources together. I know that's part of the ELO grant, but everything here fits right into the four pillars, but the four sections of it really well. So looks like a great plan to me. There's a lot of pieces in there I think are super exciting. So thanks.
And we've got our Kwan dollars that are coming. So yes.
Oh my. All right. So actually, we need a motion to approve.
Right?
I will be happy to make that motion.
Second. We're all unmuted.
All right.
Who's gonna second?
Okay, Maria, oh, I think Cecilia did.
Oh, did she? I didn't hear.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys might've done it kind of, yeah, one after the other. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Lucy Wells.
Aye.
Lucy Lawson.
Aye.
Lucy Marquez. Vice President Deasilka.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Okay. All right. Good job. Thank you, Liz, for spearheading that. You know, it's a lot of work. And thank you to everybody who was on the team. I know that a lot of people who were here earlier in the audience, I saw, were also on the committee. So, okay. Oh my goodness, getting late. Okay. So we're on to board. We're almost, we're almost finished. So, okay, board and superintendent report. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I just have one thing. It was the Superintendent Advisory Council. We just got an update on the Measure T bond construction program. So that's all I have.
Kent Awards, which I know some of you attended as well. They were great. Congratulations to our district. Yay. And then I also attended the PTA. I forget the whole title of it, but it's the awards where they were honoring Rod. And then Charlene, who puts on these great programs for our parents. And I'm just very happy that our district has been able to take advantage of that as well. That's all I have.
I also did the Kent Awards. So congratulations again. And then the Measure U Parcel Tax Oversight Committee met last week, I think it was, in a very thorough group. It's the oversight there is in good hands.
The Kent Awards were great. It was, you know, different not being in person, but it was fun to see people in the chat, at least knowing that we were hanging out together virtually. We had a bond meeting, I think, right after the last board meeting. We had two policy committee meetings since our last board meeting. Workforce Housing. And then this morning we had a Redwood City together, formerly Redwood City 2020 meeting that Alisa and John and I were at.
Okay. Yeah. So I do want to just mention the Kent Awards and also thank Linda for putting together the package and the video or the slideshow that was shown. So thank you for that. And it was fun to see all the comments. And I thought Redwood City was very much in the house. I think we had the most enthusiastic crowd commenting. So anyway, it was good to be there with all of you. Let's see, I've been at some of the same things as the others of you. Oh, we also had Workforce Housing that we've had a, at least that we've had a, at least one committee meeting and we're going to have some additional meetings with Sabrato coming up. So we're continuing to basically work on your behalf. And let's see, oh, I went to the Acknowledge Alliance event. I don't know if anyone was able to go to that, but I did want to say that Principal Sarah Shackle as well as Teacher John Haynes were acknowledged and honored for that event, which was really, really nice. So I was thinking maybe at some point we could acknowledge them at one of our board meetings as well. But yeah, that was fun to see them there. And then let's see, I already mentioned the San Mateo County School Boards Association. We had our final general meeting last, this is Monday and lots of good information there. And I think, you know, we're all sort of struggling with the same things as we opened. The CSCA, we had a board meeting and delegate assembly and I will be sending some highlights from that. I just haven't had a chance to gather up the presentations and send them your way. But there was a lot of things that came out and I was once again feeling really proud about our district. I feel like we are ahead of the curve in terms of all the things happening in the state. So good job, us, is what I wanted to say. One, one of the presentations we heard from was from this woman that talked a lot about the need when the kids come back full-time to really work on connectedness with students and that real social emotional piece and mental health. And so just all the things that we've been talking about, that we want to make sure that we really, you know, connect with our students and support them, particularly as they come in after this last year. But anyway, I felt really good about all the things we were doing. And then, let's see, Redwood City Together, you already mentioned. And I guess that's it. Okay, Dr. Baker.
I was, everything that was mentioned today. Today was the MIT Capacito. And there were like about, maybe about 10 parents there. Their main thrust was coming back to school and coming back on, getting on campus. And we talked a bit about the vaccine. And now I have a date where they can go right across, they live close to, you know, Sequoia or Hoover, one or the other next week. So that's perfect. And then just tomorrow night, thanks to Warren Slocum and his group, myself, Ana Herrera, Cecilia, and I think Michelle Ramon will be on Facebook Live talking to parents about how important it is to come back to in-person learning next year. We're looking forward to having everyone back. So that should be good. That's it for me.
All right. And I did want to mention, I forgot that also Jorge helped with the video. So thank you Jorge for helping with the video for the Kent Awards. That was quite a good honor. Okay. So let's see. Sorry. Okay, information. We have a few things on the information. San Mateo County Investment Fund, any questions? And then we are sharing some of the administrative regulations. So again, the board does not approve these. But if there's administrative regulations that we think you might like to see, we're going, or they're important to the community to see, we're going to go ahead and just put them under information. So I don't know if there was any questions or comments on that. All right. And I think the next one is also administrative regulation. Okay, any correspondence? I know we've gotten a few emails, kind of reopening that sort of thing. And I think Dr. Baker and staff have been answering those. So thank you. And other business suggested items for future agenda? All right. And board agenda calendar? I think you got the, the message that we're not meeting this Friday. So you have the gift of time. And then we'll circle back on June 18th, which is what we had scheduled for another kind of board retreat and superintendent evaluation. Dr. Baker is not available now. He needs to be meeting with the county superintendent. But one thought I had is the board members, you know, there's sort of a two-step process with the superintendent evaluation. The board also needs some time to meet and talk. And then we have time where we meet with Dr. Baker. So if the timing works okay, maybe we'll just do like a two-hour meeting on June 18th. And then we'll schedule another one, maybe in either on a, I don't know, we'll, we need to look at the board agenda and figure out if there's an opportunity to do it, you know, at six o'clock before a board meeting or if we'll need to do another day. So that's sort of what we're thinking. So I think Dr. Baker and I will get back to you when we have a chance to sort of coordinate the schedules again. So anyway, hold the 18th, but just know it won't be a full day. Because if anything, it'll just be our board meeting for a couple of hours. Okay. So. Yeah.
Um, so I just, I just wanted to address the graduations and promotions.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, just a firmly reminder, I know there have been some changes, but some of the sites want to start getting their programs completed or started on their programs. So maybe if maybe we can wrap up by Friday morning. And you can let me know which board members are going to those sites.
So I think the schedule, did everyone have a chance to look at it? And are you comfortable with where you're tagged? Not where you're tagged. I'm sorry. It is late and I'm tired. But it is a Google spreadsheet. We have the list of schools. We have the list of board members' names. I think we all had a chance to look at it. And I know there was one change today, Eliana. I added one. It's a virtual one that I'm taking from Janet and I think she took one of mine. Yeah. So I think we're good. So I think you can let the principals know that. And then, so if there's any changes to the time or locations, it would be nice if they alerted the board members to that. Or somebody does, right? Because it's not like we'll be necessarily, or just update that spreadsheet and make sure that it's sent out to us. And Maria, it looks like you have a comment.
Right. I cannot make it to Garfield at six o'clock because I'd be at Roosevelt at five. So if somebody, they're both on the same day. So if somebody else can do that or trade something.
You know, off the top of your head, what day it is?
Yeah, which one is it? I'm trying to open it.
No, I can't remember. Sorry.
Yeah, if it doesn't conflict with one of the other ones, that'll be the big question. So I can take a look or Janet, you can take a look too and let you know, Maria.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Garfield is June 9th at six o'clock.
So I'm at Hoover at 4:30.
And I'm at MIT at six. So.
So I have the, I don't know, Cecilia, you can do it, but I think I might have the best shot at being able to make it to both if I'm at 4:30 at Hoover.
Probably so because they're not, it's normally that 4:30, it's normally a longer than an hour. The past, I think it's even faster.
I think that I might be able to do it. Ellie, why don't I confirm with you?
Yeah. And I've sent an email to all sites. So principals, assistant principals and office managers have confirmed changes. And I don't anticipate any more changes from here to the end of the week.
Okay, so today is Wednesday. So maybe Cecilia, if you can check your schedule between Cecilia and Janet, I guess if you can, it, yeah, it sounds like maybe Cecilia can do it. But yes, it's, it's over the next couple of days if you can just confirm. So Eliana has that, that would be great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so anything else on the calendar? I know we have, we have the next couple of Wednesdays off and then the last three meetings in June will be meeting. Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, Cecilia, move.
In that second.
Mike seconds. I could just see you starting to unmute. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.